Okay, I would like to call this meeting. It is October sixteenth, twenty twenty five, five thirty. We are having our bylaws ad hoc meeting on today. I would like to call a roll, not a roll, call this meeting as what I did. I would like to have a roll call, um, can I? Uh Jenny, say hi.
Hi.
Hey Jenny, I am I, we have a quorum on today. Um, we approve the agenda, yes, approval of the agenda, can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion's been made by board member Mercado, can I have a second? Second's been made by Chairman Higginville. Any discussion or if they are being defined by saying I.
I.
Motion passes. We are at items three point zero bylaws workshop. At our last meeting, we discussed some things. Um, I had been in conversations with legal counsel, rapport. If you could just walk us through, um, some of the things that we have here on tonight, and then we'll go deeper into discussion.
Okay, so I sent out earlier today, um, some work that President Stevens had asked that I do to make this a more focused or efficient process. And one of the documents, there were two documents. One, which I wrote is the fuller version, is the copy of the bylaws with all of the uh edits and changes proposed by the Council of Great City Schools on it. And the second document, which I entitled cleaner, uh, and it stated today, is a sort of streamlined uh version of that document with certain uh sections moved off of it, um, which President Stevens is going to describe as his proposal today. Um, and I did it really so it was easier to read and you could sort of see how the document will look once it's scaled down to align with what President Stevens is proposing and assuming you agree with that of the committee. Then we have a clean version to approve and go through and work through today. The other thing I did to help, I hope it was helpful, is I went article by article to describe uh those places in which, um, according to my notes, we had reached some consensus last time. And these are the, this is the verbiage that we had concluded was appropriate last time. And then moving forward, all of the proposed language, um, which we can reflect on or this group can reflect on, the ad hoc committee, um, article by article. So it helps, it will help us as we go through it, or as you go through it, to see the changes that are proposed. And then, you know, I, I liken this to collective bargaining where we have a document in front of us and we're looking at language and we say yes, and then I can write okay, and then we can move on to the next bit of language. Um, and so as you go through this and as we read through this, you can see where I have flagged certain topics that President Stevens and I discussed were likely to be appropriate for the full board to weigh in on. Um, and then those places where you might make a proposal that doesn't necessitate full board discuss, excuse me, discussion. Um, and it will become clear as we go through it, article by article, you know, what, what you have to decide and what you might want to put to the full board. So it's really, it's really designed to help your decision making tonight because I know that Tyrell would like this document to get in its final form as soon as possible. Um, the one thing I will just put out there right from the start, and you can see it as we go through it, is that there were two, um, sections in the proposal by the Council of Great City Schools that President Stevens is proposing. We move into, um, a governance policy. I think as you may recall from the training with AJ, there was a point at which somebody asked the question as to what was the difference between something in the bylaws and something which was a governance policy. And AJ's answer was, not much, it's really a matter of preference and organization as to how you want to do it. And I think, um, for a variety of reasons which President Stevens can describe, he would like to propose, or he is proposing, that all, um, governance issues surrounding the role of the superintendent, the delegation of duties to the superintendent, and the evaluation of the superintendent be created as a separate standalone governance policy. And similarly, the section of the bylaws in which AJ proposed uh that there be certain, um, rules regarding communications between the board and the community, that also, uh, President Stevens has proposed, we move into a separate governance policy, which doesn't mean they will be ignored, it just means that the topic of the bylaws will be a bit more confined to what the board does operationally in running meetings and setting agendas. Um, so that's sort of a overview of what this, um, step by step, um, process would look like.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So you mentioned the duties of the superintendent, the evaluation of the superintendent. Won't that all fall under whatever contract the committee approves for the superintendent? And it really shouldn't be in bylaws, and I think that's what you're saying is that, um, I mean, if you give your superintendent a contract, isn't that correct?
No, I, let me just interrupt you. So the contract, the employment agreement with the superintendent will have certain, there will be some overlap. And the superintendent policy is not designed to replace that contract. It's really, in most districts, a supplement to it. And I think it's particularly important here, where the Council of Great City Schools is putting a great deal of emphasis on delegating to the superintendent non-governance work. And that, um, decision making that the board has to engage in about what should be delegated and what should be held back is a kind of itself, a sort of policy judgment that the board needs to be making.
But it doesn't belong, but again, I think you are saying, and I'm agreeing with you, and I think this is what you're looking at. The role of the superintendent doesn't belong in bylaws.
Correct.
It needs to be taken out. So I had read your original bylaws, and there was some sections and they are about the superintendent's role.
Correct.
And that needs to be separate, that needs to be, that is not.
That's it, and, and, and the Council of Great City Schools really just took a look at the existing bylaws and said, here's our, here are our suggestions. They didn't, it didn't move the superintendent stuff to a, a separate policy. What, what President Stevens is suggesting and, and, and would like to discuss with, with the others, with your input, is that everything pertaining to the delegation, the evaluation, and the oversight of the superintendent be a standalone policy. Now, as a matter of fact, this district in its potpourri of policies, which we know, we, we experienced the last time, I mean, they're just like coming out of woodwork, they do have superintendent policies. So when the policy group, uh, looks at the superintendent govern, the governance policies, which is going to include the superintendent's policy, this language should be considered with the other existing language to come up with a new clean superintendent policy. That will be separate from any contract, and that will be separate from the bylaws. That make sense?
Right, and whatever's in the policy needs to follow state statute in terms of what the role of superintendent is.
Yeah, but there's a lot more texture in the delegation process. I mean, the state law says delegate, delegate, delegate. So the hope is that the superintendent policy will put a little bit of meat on that, that statutory command and give some, some specific direction as many policies can do. But of course, everything has to, you know, align with state law. I mean, the state law pretty much says delegate to the superintendent. And what AJ trained these folks to think about is that delegation is really bigger than it sounds at first blush. That's a lot of work that's supposed to be delegated, and their role is going to become monitoring how he or she is doing in that delegated arena. So that policies like the HR policy and all that operational stuff is not really a policy, it's really the superintendent's work.
Really quick, and then I'll jump in right after, go ahead.
So, so what I tell my, when I, when I represent school departments and I'll meet with school committees, and they'll say, I want to do A, B, C, D, I'll say to them, that's the, that's the job of the superintendent. And if, and I've said this in front of superintendents, and they've heard me say, if you don't like the job the superintendent's doing, then your role as a school committee is to change superintendents. But you basically delegate the running of the school district to the superintendent. And then as a committee, and I'm sure you've done the same thing in your district, Sarah, and then as a committee, he has, he or she has certain requirements and policy and procedures. If you don't like the job he's doing, well, then your job is, is, is to replace that person, not to jump in and, you know what I mean? You can't really tell him what to do, you've got to let him do it. And then if he doesn't do it the way you want, well, then you can do something about him. But most of the, most of the running of the school district, remember, even, even more so now with the change of the statute, even the superintendent is hiring staff members, the, the job goes to the superintendent. And your job is to oversee that superintendent's role and how that superintendent is doing.
Yeah, I mean, they've been, they've been battered with that, literally told that in hours and hours and hours of training. So I think they understand, I, I'm speaking for you, but I think I'm just trying to take out of the bylaws stuff that isn't properly in front of it. So that one went, and the other thing that President Stevens wanted was the communications piece because that has some, which, which Tyrell, you can explain.
Yeah, no, 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 you're absolutely correct. So I think the first thing we can do, and I want to discuss really quickly with the board members, do we feel comfortable moving our, it's section five point five from the Council of Great City Schools recommendation. It's board member concerns about superintendent performance. Section five point six, board member concerns about non-supern superintendent employee performance. Article eight, that discusses all of the communications which is connected to some of our district communications. And we, I think we'll just keep in the communications between board members. Um, but all of the other communication pieces will be removed.
Okay, so you're jumping ahead a little bit, and I didn't remove, I think it would be good to go through it bit by bit.
Okay, but really quick, I just want to get an agreement.
But I get what, where you're going.
Yeah, but I do want to get an agreement. Do we agree with moving the superintendent, um, delegation pieces and everything pertaining really to the superintendent um, to a separate policy?
Me personally, when we talk about like delegating, um.
We're not there yet. So the first thing is we'll move, we're not even there yet. So I don't want to get into the logistics of what we're delegated, I don't want to get into that. I just want to agree that we feel comfortable moving, um, the superintendent stuff to a separate policy, and then we'll discuss it once we get there, which we have a different time. Okay, do we feel comfortable with that? Okay, um, so we are comfortable with moving it, do we, we're not to take a vote or nothing, right?
Well, I would.
It's not, okay, it's just a recommendation.
Because you just go through it order, because, because then you'll hit it. And then your proposal is a little broader than the one that's written down here, which is fine. But I think it would be really good to look at the document. And my suggestion would be to look at the document that is considered the fuller version, and let's just go through it bit by bit, but.
Okay, let's do that first, okay, let's do that first.
Okay, so you gave us copies that are black and white, but then at some point, there were some that were highlighted that you sent out a later, earlier, or.
Uh, the what I sent out today are the two black and white versions, that's it.
Okay.
So you ignore the one I sent out earlier because it's been superseded by these.
Okay.
It's so much easier to see if it's a different color style or something.
I know, sorry, yeah, yes, I, I.
She didn't want to use her ink, I guess.
I didn't, I didn't, uh, you guys didn't get the print, the color printer today, I didn't specify.
All is well, all is well.
Um.
Let's start with article one.
Yeah. All right, so this one is, um, article one, two, and three is the stuff we did last week. And this is the language which, um, we had talked about. And I think I captured what everyone wanted. Um, it articulates the role of the board, it vests the board's legal power in the Rhode Island Constitution, article twelve, it references the General Assembly. This is all the stuff that kind of gives you the architecture, the legal architecture that, um, gives you collectively as a board power. So, um, my thought is that if this language is good for you, we can just approve it, um, and move on.
Uh, I would say, I, so I was reading it, so it says in accordance with Rhode Island general laws sixteen dash two dash nine A, it says he, what does that mean, he?
Oh, no, the.
Is it the?
The, it's a small t, the small t for the large T.
Okay, because when I looked at the, the other version you gave me, it just had, um, he. It says vested he entire, did you mean they?
It's just hard to see it.
It's hard to see it, there's a little t before the large T that's crossed off.
Okay, because in this version, the, the T is not there.
Yeah, and, and more importantly, I wanted to just make as a centerpiece sixteen two nine A because in all the, all the court decisions from the nineteen fifties to the present, this is the language that gives the board power. And I think I said that last time, I brought my book, I didn't bring it this time. But this is the, this is sort of the, I don't know how, I can't find the appropriate metaphor, but this is the, the starting point for board power. It's directly from the General Assembly to you guys, and it's pretty significant. So, um.
Any questions by board members? One second.
Yeah, for article one, I think that you captured what we said last time, so I don't have.
I think Paula had a question.
I know, really quick, board members first, okay?
Yeah, I'm just saying that you captured pretty much what we discussed last time, so I mean.
Same, same as me.
Okay, bye Dr. Dylan.
Mine's quick. Um, on the last sentence, the bylaws on a regular basis, um, typically you would see, uh, an interval there, annual, biannual. Just remember, like a regular basis doesn't really tell you how often you should evaluate yourself.
Do you think it should be annually, usually?
Yeah, yeah, usually it's annual.
That's a good suggestion.
She's on the last sentence of article one.
Where it says the board shall evaluate its performance under these bylaws on a regular basis. And I think Paula is suggesting at least make it annual, so that there's a definitive commitment to do it annually.
Versus every day.
Regular.
What does regular basis mean?
Exactly.
How you guys feel?
I feel comfortable.
Okay, let's add that language.
So with that, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna make my changes in blue so I can see it really well, on an annual basis.
And do we have a, um, do we have, we don't, we don't have, we haven't taken the training yet that the Council of Great City Schools has us take about evaluating ourselves?
Right.
Okay, but I think it's in here though, right?
It is later on, so yes, and that will be like.
Will specify with.
Yeah, 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 that's later.
Okay, um, two, scope of bylaws, um, I think that all makes sense. Um, and then three, um, I don't want to go there yet, but I, I do, and I spoke into Chairman Higginville and Board Member Mercado, I do want to add language in there, I will go to that later on in today's meeting. Um, but I need some clearer specified, uh, language in those, in that, in that section.
So approved, but there may be additional language.
Yeah, there will be.
Okay, okay, so okay, 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 subject to further amendment. Okay, so the next section is four point one, and this is President Stevens' proposed revamp of four point one and four point two. Um, it's slightly different from what exists, which you can see if you're looking at the fuller version.
Yeah, can I explain it?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so the version I propose is a cleaner version, um, of the, uh, organization meeting. And I had spoken a little bit about it at the last meeting. Um, it talks about the ten duly elected and appointed board members, um, talks about five and five. It also covers that the organization meeting should take place at least the first Wednesday of February. Um, so it definitely covers that as well, uh, so there's at least a, an annual date. Not saying that it may always be followed, but there is in fact a date. And then also, it just clarifies, um, the vacancies and stuff, but it puts it in a thinner section. If you look at the old bylaws for the organization meeting, I'm only looking at so much, oh my goodness.
It's on page three, it's, uh, the pages are not, there's a little snag in the version, but you can see, it's on page three, the old language, which is deleted.
Okay, 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 one second. All right, I don't know where it is, but, um, yeah, I don't know where it is. Oh, yes, I do, no, I know. Okay, if you look at the regular language, it sort of bunches all of like the filling vacancies of executive offices together, where in this article, it kind of just sort of breaks it down a little bit more, makes it more cleaner with bullet points, um, and sort of sections. So I just thought that this would in fact be a better version and a cleaner version to address the organizational meeting. Any board members have questions?
And I don't have any question, just more like a comment.
Sorry, basically.
Mm-hmm.
And in the last meeting, uh, we were talking about our first, uh, weekly meeting, uh, probably here. Um, yeah, I, I agree with the president, so I think that even we might not follow it, but I think that with, um, adding the dates, um, and also specific date that, you know, when can we meet?
Yeah, we had talked about January at the last meeting, but I think, uh, Tyrell is suggesting February might be safer.
Yeah, it gives, it gives also, you know, there's going to be an election in the fall and, you know, the new mayor, um, you know, going to appoint.
If a new mayor.
They're going to appoint board members and, um, yeah, so that process might even take longer, so I think that February.
It's on page three, it's on page three.
It's actually on page three, I was looking for it.
You have to, the pages three and four are just.
Oh, all right, oh, all right, I already got it.
They're just, uh, you have to, you have to just turn it over, you'll find it, so.
Really quick, Jenny, any questions?
No, I have a little bit because I think I made my comments last week that because of the hybrid war, some might not get on time, so I think.
Start a new area is better.
Yes.
You did say that, I actually took your feedback, okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, anybody else have questions? Go ahead, Sam.
I, I just integrated it, I, you know, I, I just, if you folks like it and February works for you, we can just move on.
Bring along to committees.
Okay.
Now, I do have a question, are we going to present this to the full board?
Yes.
Okay, okay, and then so, so we're here, but then the full board will take the final decision.
Yeah, but we will, it will be a first draft and then we'll go back.
Okay, and we're hoping to get tonight to the parts that the board needs to weigh in on.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Which is everything.
Does, the full board don't, doesn't, they have to weigh in on adoption of the full bylaws because you're just.
Correct.
Some may recommend.
Well, there, there are a couple of areas, Mary Ann, where there's some decisional work that they may want the full board to weigh in on. There are a couple of, of, unless you decide you don't want.
Let's, let's get, let's get there first and we can talk about that process.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Because I want them to weigh in on everything, okay?
Yeah, oh, they will, okay.
And then, again, they have, it's, they have, you're going to have a discussion and explain this, right, at the next meeting?
Yes, yeah.
Can I just ask one more question, it just happened in one of the districts I was in. So they had something like this, like if, if there was a vacancy and filled it, um, and then one of the members didn't who like would have been, that person didn't want it. Um, I, I don't know if that's a thought or if it's something you have to, um.
You mean if they rejected, you know, like if someone was.
Yeah, yeah. They were like, they didn't have the time to actually fill in that role and they couldn't. And so, um, it, it created a little bit of havoc because their bylaws didn't have a what if.
You're talking about Barrington?
Yeah.
So did they add language? I, I have Barrington's here.
Uh, they actually. They, they, I don't think they did, I think they had to move up some meetings in order to sell board at that time, if I'm remembering correctly.
I don't see any, I, I did.
I don't know that they changed the bylaws, but I think they had to move up some meetings. And I just want to throw it out there that it's a possibility that you might have somebody who doesn't have the time to be acting secretary or vice, and they might want to, like, does that just mean it would go down by succession?
We should explain it though, you're right, I agree.
Well, I don't know what the answer would be.
Me either. Maybe there's a process of, I don't know.
I don't see that Barrington did anything to address it.
I don't know, I think we just moved the meeting, if I remember correctly.
Well, do you want?
Let's put a note, let's put a note, yeah.
So if.
So what do you think, man?
If, if candidate rejects the opportunity.
Yeah.
Okay, what if?
How about the full committee will be, will be asked who wants to do it, like, if somebody doesn't want to do it,
Uh, it's here.
you might want to go to the full committee and say, who, is there anybody that wants to do it? And then you vote on them. Right? I mean, let's say for example, and it's happened, I don't know why anybody, you guys, I don't know why you want, your jobs are harder these days, but let's say they don't want to do it. Should then be asked of the full committee, does anyone want to volunteer to be the secretary? And then see if there's any volunteers.
I could see like the VP saying, I don't want to be. I don't want to be, I purposely want to be VP, not P.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you ask who wants to be president?
You ask the whole board who wants.
So you're saying just put it to a vote?
Yes.
Just for an intern, if, if there's a no.
Makes sense.
Like if that person, if the person who it should be says can't.
But was you speaking over Rome, like instead of having the process?
Oh, no, 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 I like the process.
Oh, just for that, okay, okay.
If there's a vacancy, if there's a vacancy.
Yeah, like your process, and I mean, you're saying right now, if for some reason you, you didn't want, you couldn't be president anymore, then your vice president would take over. But let's say your vice president says, I don't want to do it. I think it should be open to the full ten members, the other.
So open, open to the full board for volunteers and vote?
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
That's it. Right, because there's a lot of work, and maybe the VP doesn't want it, move off.
Yeah, yeah.
That's true, okay.
All right, so I'll add some, I'll add some language, um, under that section.
And then changes to bylaws, all, oh, no, by committees, right, I know.
I think we're on simultaneous, on effective charter amendments. I made a note why I need this, but if you want it. At one point, I thought, do you really need it? I'm not sure what.
Maybe we don't.
I mean, all you're saying there is that if the whole world charter is amended, we still elect board members the same way.
Okay, yeah, cross that out.
So it's like, it's just sort of.
No, it's, it's just taking up space. Take it out.
Okay. All right. All right, so now we're on the committees, which, um, I may have gotten my signals crossed, Paula, I, I had thought.
You and Tyrell were ahead.
I just, I just, well, I had thought that we would do here, um, what I talked about last time, um, was rather than writing it this way, it's very clearly articulated in the law who has to be a member.
But only for the health and wellness.
That's all I'm talking about.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I, the other ones, I wasn't, I was only talking about health and wellness.
And I think it was the workshops.
No, that's a different one, that's a whole different one.
Oh, different, oh, okay.
I think the issue for the committees were, the way I, and I, I, I wrote this in my notes, um, what I recall discussing last time was, we don't want to do the committee diet because we think we need these four committees, and one of them is required by law to help the wellness. But we wanted to broaden the membership of the finance and policy committee so it wasn't limited to board members. That, that was my recall, that we would create, um.
We, we have that method, yeah.
And, and Sarah, your subcommittees cannot be a majority of your committees, so your committee is ten, you could never have more than five members on any.
And, and, and there wasn't, the suggestion was not, because currently there are three on policy and three on finance, but that's all that could be there. And the idea was that, well, what if you wanted a, a staff member on policy, or a parent on policy, or you want to create categories for participation beyond those three board members? So.
But would you allow them to vote? Because remember, policies are, and again, your subcommittee policy recommends to the full committee, so.
But they're advisory, and, 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 and many policy committees exist with more than board members. I mean, there's, I, I have policy committee with, um, principals with, there have been situations where you need a, a nurse.
Can I jump in?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I, what I was under the impression of was that. Yeah, um I, what I was under the impression of was that there was a possibility that the superintendent will. Assign a staff member to support that committee, that's what I thought it was, I didn't know we was discussing members, other members like joining it, or other people joining it.
And that's the way I see committees, I mean, I have a policy committee in one of my districts and we would fill this whole room. But the people that sit there, principals, um nurses and everything, they make recommendations, but the actual voting members of that subcommittee. Are the school committee members that that there, they're just listening to the input, and they were assigned to the committee, so they have to come every meeting. Um but they're giving input to the school committee, so that the the school committee can vote based on the recommendations of of the group, that's how I see it, Sarah.
Yeah, I mean, that is a way to do it, I mean, by state law, the health and wellness committee as an example, has a broader cross-section.
That's different.
That's true.
I think that this board, judging from its sensibilities. Looks for broader participation from the community, and what I heard last time was that there, and it's your call. I mean, this meeting here, for example, we had a bit of a discussion about whether you could include in on the policy subcommittee, a former school board member. Um and if you want to create a broader constituency to actually vote on your policy committee. You need to do it now, or you're gonna only have three board members. You can have people supporting and giving advice, always, that's not an issue, but I think you have to decide. And if you wanna leave it at three, that's fine, but that was one thing I heard last time, up for discussion. The other thing was the issue of the standalone committees or the ad hoc committees. I remember Night Jean saying that the language proposed by the council was a little too draconian, because they said if you didn't deliver the result within a certain period of time. The committee would be disbanded, so there was some work that needed to be done on this, um. I'm I'm happy to take direction and do some drafting, if you want it, um I'm not sure this is ready to finalize.
Mm-hmm.
Um, wait, Chairman, I just have um. I want to make sure we understand this, so if you have known it's currently uh, unless the president makes any changes, we have team of members.
Say that again.
Team board members.
We have only, like, the only people who can be on the finance committee would be three board members.
The board.
And the only people who could be on the policy committee.
Health and wellness is different though.
Right, health and wellness is mandated by state law, and CTT is.
It is different.
So so by state, so by state law, Knight, um they, from the board, they only recommend that a chair of the board, that someone from the school board chairs the committee. But then in the bylaws, we address, and then there's other members and stuff on it as well, by state law, that has to be a part of it. Um but in the bylaws, it just says that the board is to have no less than three members. So there'll be three board members, including a chair, the chair aligns with state law, um but then I think, what is it, like parents and teachers or something like that?
Where are you looking?
This is actually the document that.
For for health and wellness.
Alright, he's talking, just getting towards health and wellness, we was talking about the other committees.
But what we write in the bylaws is that the remainder of the membership shall be consistent with what Rhode Island law says, so that's just a reference to the Rhode Island law.
Alright.
You have to do it the way the law says, where you have discretion is for policy, finance, and career and technical education.
Right. Yeah, cause health and wellness is in a separate category.
Yeah, that's scripted completely by the state, but career and technical education, you have.
Okay.
Uh you have already decided to have a member of the school board, a member of the Rhode Island Board of Trustees, and a representative from the teachers' union.
Can I do this, um does the committee feel comfortable with myself meeting with um Deputy Superintendent Dylan, uh Ms. Marion and Sarah to. Get clarity on this before next Wednesday? Sweet, okay, you feel good, okay, and we'll just make a recommendation after.
I agree. So we'll do more work and put this off.
Let's do that, let's do that.
Okay. Um, okay, so that is. The next one is four point four, and that's minor, um the only change there was that the. Uh instead of a two-thirds vote, we said at least seven, I think that was our way of indicating a super majority.
Yeah, and I was gonna also say, so it took out the appointees, cause it's not a fully appointed no more.
Right.
But then also it says that amendments to these bylaws will be proposed by any board member during an annual review of the bylaws at the organizational meeting. Now typically, the last two times it's been amended, that hasn't been the case, so I don't know, does that need to stay in there, or should that be sort of more drawn? In members wanting to change the bylaws, like right now, we're not abiding by the bylaws.
Because we're doing it now instead of at the organizational meeting, yeah, but you're.
Right. Is this like mandated?
You're in a, you're in a.
I know, a different role.
Well, yes, you're you're not technically complying with the bylaws by doing it now, but you're in a state of transformation, so I wouldn't worry about that, but you're worried that it would be limiting.
Okay. Maybe, or maybe not.
Um.
Well, I mean, I think you you, right now, you're gonna do it, because you're revising, so whether it be the next school committee meeting or meeting after that, you're going to amend these bylaws.
Alright.
You have every right as a school, no matter what policy we put in place, no matter what set of bylaws we put in place, you as a school committee always have a right to amend, you know, what the document is.
Okay.
So I think you need to do it now, and then maybe afterwards do it annually, don't you agree, Sarah?
That makes sense.
And all it says there is, it may be proposed, so I don't think it's restricting you, I think Marion's right, like.
I agree.
Okay.
You can do it whenever you want.
You can do whatever you wanna do, when you wanna do it, it's, I mean, you could always change your bylaws, you could always change your policies.
Okay.
There, this is just saying, if you wanna do it at the organizational meeting, you can do it.
Which is at the time of the.
I didn't see that maybe proposed to, but that makes sense, that makes sense.
And it doesn't say shall, it says may, so I think it's, I.
It's a nice remark.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the seven, I think, is that okay with you, cause I think we settled.
Well, that is two-thirds.
Yes.
Yeah, because you have ten.
Well, we have.
We needed six and two-thirds to be a, right, so.
Yeah.
We rounded up.
That makes sense.
So I think we're good, if you're okay with that, everyone, yes, okay.
That's reasonable, yeah.
Alright, President and Vice President, um you have to jump over the page. There's nothing meaningful here for President, I I think I just, um, nothing, I just. Uh minor language changes here and there, but it's the same as exists.
Uh for the President part, um the President shall preside over all meetings of the board. Should we just cross all of that out and be similar to the duties of the President shall be, shall include the following, like the Vice President piece? And then you put uh preside over meetings in like the second bullet?
Yeah, you know what, it's a good catch, cause I I, in the cleaner version, I made it, I, you'll see that I eliminated. If you look at the cleaner version, I suggested saying, the President shall provide, preside over all meetings of the board. Their duties shall include, and then um I I took out chair board meetings, because it was redundant. So you're gonna preside over all regular meetings of the board, so I don't think we need to say it in two places.
Right, but I would just cross that entire section out, and I'll just say, the duties of the President shall include the following. Just like when you look at Vice President, the duties of the Vice President shall include the following, and then just add preside over regular board meetings in line two.
Okay. So that says chair board meetings.
Right.
But I wouldn't limit it to regular, I would just say, cause you might have a regular meeting, you might have a special meeting.
Okay, okay.
So I would just, so just say, the President, the duties of the President shall include the following, and then you just list it, one, two, three, blah, blah, blah.
Okay. How you guys doing, okay, okay, Night Jean?
So we, so what are we adding on, so it's just, are we adding on the President's shoe?
Yeah, so we're gonna cross that out, and then we're just going to include the same language that is here for the Vice President.
Yeah.
It just says, the duties of the Vice President shall include the following, so that would be apparent, you're just, you know, the uh duties of the President shall include the following, and then we'll have all the duties there. Okay. It's just that language, so it's not all over the place.
Okay, so with that added, are you guys okay?
You okay with that, Jean?
Just a quick, quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do you think also the way on the numbers, like we want to, she for the first one, she would say maybe before they prepare the meeting agendas, to make a clearer of the President's. Yeah, or preside over all meetings.
So they get number one instead of two?
Oh.
Oh, so you prefer to swap it?
So maybe make.
Yeah, the first one, yeah.
Instead of using chair, say, make one preside over all board meetings, is that?
And then move the first one to the second line?
Yes. Yeah.
Just swap the first and second line, but put preside over the.
Uh over all board meetings. And then make.
And that's typically bullets, right, or no?
I put numbers, do you want bullets?
Bullets.
Do you like bullets better?
Please.
Okay. I mean, seriously? Okay.
Unless, is it, is there something with the bullets?
No, no, I, that's whatever you want, it's fine.
Okay. I didn't know that was a legal thing.
Do you want like a, like a, a simple bullet?
She wants a regular bullet, no little bullet.
Yeah, that's a.
Like the uh, preside over all board meetings is the first bullet, and then prepare meeting agendas is two, and then maintain orders, three.
Yes, now, um, yeah, that's good, but do we just, I think I seen something, it may be later on, but it said like. The President preside, um prepares the meetings with the assistance of the superintendent and the S and G or something like that.
That's in agenda.
Oh, okay, alright, okay.
That's in the agenda section.
We'll leave it alone, we're good, we're good there, anything with the Vice President? Is it pretty consistent or?
I think it's pretty clear that the Vice President does whatever the, if you can't do it, he does your jobs, and he assists so many.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're okay with two, or, and everything is gonna be bulleted, but it'll be the same language.
Now, that's the thing with the secretary, um it's all bunched up, should that be in bullets, or does it, is that how it typically is supposed to look? I'm just trying to make it look nice and consistent, you know.
So you can bullet that too.
Yeah, I can.
But can we do that, let's bullet it.
You want it bulleted?
I don't, he does.
Bullet for consistency.
And cleaning of records.
And cleanliness.
Now, under local control, typically, how does this process take place?
We're, we're on.
I'm in, I'm sorry, we're all over the place, is under secretary?
So.
But it says, the Secretary shall uh be responsible for monitoring the board records and overseeing the superintendent's evaluation process to include scheduling and. You know, but the first part, cause I know that that's something, thank God for Martha, Martha's really been leading, typically, what is that process though, under like local control, like what records are they gonna be? Monitoring? Or is that something that also is delegated?
The secretary. Those are like the minutes, the secretary takes the minutes.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute, the secretary is a member of your school committee.
Correct.
So it's an appointed person on your committee.
Mm-hmm.
Who does all this.
Correct.
And then, and if the, and moves up if you're pre.
Right.
Like everybody has something different, like.
Which.
Every district is different.
I mean, I think. You know, mostly what the secretary does in most jurisdictions is they take notes of the meetings and of the minutes, that's the primary duty. This, that's, I mean, the overseeing of the process, I think it means that you schedule the meetings. I don't really, I haven't been here to see how it works, I mean, usually that is not a singularly task, a singular task of the secretary. But you don't have a hired intermediary, so um.
It's it's kind of the third person in control of your full school committee, I've seen them work different ways. Now, some of my committees have a secretary, and they're the ones that read the resolutions, or read the motions, or things like that.
Yeah.
But it just means if your President isn't there, and your Vice President's in there, they have to decide.
It's kind of like the third in charge.
Yeah, that's what it really is.
Okay, then then with the 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 first couple of lines, so let me just read it, the Secretary shall be responsible for monitoring board records and for overseeing the superintendent evaluation process. Uh to include scheduling the necessary meetings between the superintendent and the board, and ensuring the pro- that the process is complete. According to the timelines identified by policy, which is the evaluation of the superintendent. So with that piece, what I'm saying is with this piece here, doesn't it, doesn't that give the secretary like a role and do that?
Why, yeah, but, why, why would the secret, yeah, why would the secretary be doing that?
Shall I be there?
Why wouldn't it be the Chair that would be doing that, the President?
Yeah.
Like, I don't understand why you need the third person to 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 schedule the meeting on the evaluation and things like that.
I don't know, that, I've never seen.
It's, and it's been in the bylaws, huh?
Yeah, I've never seen this before.
I've never seen that either, honestly, I, let me, let me look to a couple, I have two.
Why don't we just take that paragraph out, leave the second paragraph, so it's if it, it's it's a job of the, the President, not the secretary.
The full.
Is it, is it a way we can add that, um.
It's, it's the President, I, I know, list of bullets for the President, does it have the superintendent's um evaluation?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I wanted to say.
Well, I see.
I wonder if they, I wonder if they did it to like delegate off of the superintendent.
Give it to some, give somebody else and do it.
I I don't know, well, maybe it should say, I don't know.
Well, just for, just for the hell of it, Barrington doesn't have any role for the secretary at all.
I don't have no, there's no roles.
And and Lincoln, which is the other one I pulled, cause I think it's pretty good, is um they have duties of the Chair. And the Vice Chair, and then they have a clerk. But it's a, it, the clerk is not, is not a board member.
No, the clerk is the appointed administrative assistant who takes the minute with the model.
That's, that's, that's a different, so that's not.
It seems like there should be a number ten, or a tenth bullet. Under um, the President shall, and it should, it's the President shall be responsible for the annual superintendent evaluation, right?
It seems like a pretty heavy role, and it should be in your hands.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I agree, that, I think.
Yeah.
That should be the President that does, yeah, cause remember, the only, your biggest control in this district, or any district, is the superintendent, so.
That's another bullet that we need to.
Or the President. But I think, I think we wanna make clear that that the Chair is involved in ensuring that the process is followed, not that.
Okay.
Right. Right, every, ten people evaluate, no.
So maybe, so maybe can we say that the Secretary will assist the superintendent, but, okay, let's do that.
Yes.
Okay.
Will assist the Chief.
So let me, let me, let me get this straight, so we're gonna have a new bullet.
The Chair, yeah. That's what I meant, alright. The superintendent.
We're gonna have a new bullet for the President, which maybe should go towards the top, cause it's kind of a big job.
I agree.
So we're gonna have a bullet.
Okay, Night Jean, Night Jean's like, huh?
Right?
Night Jean?
Don't worry about the placement, let's just put that there while we're talking.
Okay, so it's it's oversee the ensure. Superintendent evaluation process, but that's just shorthand, and then. It's gonna be a tenth bullet, and then we're gonna put under Secretary, which is going to be bulleted. Monitoring the board's records and assisting the superintendent in overseeing the evaluation process.
Assisting the Chair, the President, I'm sorry, you're not.
President. The President, the President.
We keep saying that, we keep saying that, I said it.
It's the President, right, this district is President, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry, I.
Yes.
Yeah. No, no.
Yeah, it's the Chair, I'm the Chair.
I keep saying Chair.
It is, it is.
It's all in the bylaw, in terms of processes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so does that sound good to folks?
That sounds good, now, one other thing I may make, well, I'm gonna make a recommendation, maybe, since we have a secretary who's talking about board records, maybe we should say. Work with the clerk, or something like that, which the designated clerk, in this case, would be Martha, um with board records and stuff.
When necessary, let's put when necessary.
When necessary, yes.
So work with and assist the clerk with.
You can say work with Martha, no joke.
Work with.
Work with. You're making it work much more, she's not.
Work with the clerk uh to maintain and monitor.
Mm-hmm.
Board records, including minutes.
Correct.
Minutes are important.
Correct.
Maintain and monitor.
Does that make sense to everybody? Okay.
Board minutes.
Just somebody includes, you know.
That's a good idea. Um.
I love the language of if both President and Vice President should be absent from any meetings, the Secretary.
Right, that needs to stay, yeah.
Yes, that needs to stay.
Shall call the meeting to order, because the secretary is the leader, so.
Is the third, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Sounds good, isn't it, okay?
And again, let's say the President's gonna be late, or the Vice President's gonna be late, the Secretary can stop the meeting and.
Yeah, right.
Alright.
Okay, so we are on. Individual members, five point three. So in a long-winded way, what I um did here, and you should look at the cleaner version. To see what it, what it looks like, um although it's very similar. to see what it, what it looks like, um, although it's very similar. Um, I just took the language from sixteen two dash nine point one and I gave it numbers instead of bullets. Cause I personally love numbers, because then you know what you're talking about. Otherwise, you have to say first bullet, second bullet, third bullet.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Oh, maybe we'll change it.
I, I'm gonna plead my case for numbers.
Okay.
Um, and the only, I, I, there's nothing substantive here, all I did was take out language which wasn't in the statute, so the statute didn't have anything about work collaboratively with the superintendent and finance department, and the statute didn't say anything.
And it says city finance department?
Yeah, didn't say, had nothing in there about that. And that's not in that state law. Um, these are, I mean, you don't have to recite these in your bylaws because it's in the state law, but I thought you might want to because these are really, this is what the state says school committees should do, so I thought it was a good way of capturing all the stuff that you've been training on regarding delegation, maintaining uh distance from the administrative process. I mean, it's state law, you're supposed to follow it, and you could either include it in this detail and list it out, or you could not, but I left it in in this case, cause I thought it was, you know, it's your it's your state law telling you what you're supposed to do.
But either way, if you put in sixteen two dash nine point one, it's basically saying to do everything what Sarah says.
I just copied it, I li- I literally copied it, and you don't have to, but again, I thought it was the one place where
Alright, alright.
It's up to them.
putting the state law out there clearly might be helpful, as compared with listing the open meeting act provisions, which you can just read.
So you're just saying, so you're saying that, um.
This is exactly what appears in the state law.
So for individual board members, you're saying you don't think that we should have the numbers there, or we should take that out and just cite the state law?
Either way, whatever you choose to do.
You could, you, you could do it either way. It would be a shorter document if you.
I don't know how many board members read the bylaws, to be honest with you.
And, and again, it doesn't have, I really love the book, sixteen dash two dash nine point one says it.
Okay.
I'd be the only one citing it.
So, so we could just cite the state law and then you would save space.
Yes.
You're comfortable with that?
So you would cross out one through.
So do you wanna?
I would, you would save space, it's, it's very satisfying to delete things.
One two.
Cause we may need it for some more stuff, I'm joking.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Anything you, any questions tonight, um?
So the, the vote is to eliminate the, you know, how they.
Right. You think this should be cited or would you just take it out and just cite the state law?
No, I think this, yeah, I love, I love the numbers, the way it was presented.
So you want to keep it?
Yeah, because it's, um, for new board members for next year, I mean, this might be, just put the state law there.
See, Night Jean does read the state law.
So you know what you need, that, you know, you need.
I was inspired by your book, you know, the tricks.
Wait, the first thing you need for any new board member is you must read the bottom.
Yes.
Well, this is the only thing you really should read.
But how many?
Right.
I think there's no, there's nothing bad about putting it in unless you have a space issue, and since everything is electronic.
I have some people come, so what does the bylaw say about this? So I'm like, you know, so.
Now, keep in mind, it doesn't really matter what the bylaws say, because you, you don't have to do anything about a board member that doesn't follow the bylaws anyways, you know, like.
It's true. I know, but we don't need to emphasize this. This is like a, this is like, it's kind of like the Ten Commandments or like In God We Trust, you know, it's like that. It's beautiful.
What you think?
It's a, it's up to you.
It's, it really doesn't matter whether it's, again, if you all feel needed, you know.
So Night Jean wants to keep it.
Either way.
And I, and I got the numbers perfectly aligned.
Right, that wants to keep it.
Oh, did you say keep?
Yes, he wants to keep it.
What you think, Jenny?
Either way.
Okay, let's just keep it.
Either way, we keeping with the law, right? So either way.
Right, so, we staying with the law.
But, but we're taking out those other pieces, right?
We're taking out where it's inconsistent with the law, so.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay. Yay!
Cause you could easily say just follow the law, I mean.
Yeah, but this is the moment to learn the law, come on, Marion.
Shall we give a test at the end?
Oh, I wanted to do that.
Marion, Marion and I was, went to a museum together years ago, and I won't forget this. It was in South Carolina, and I would linger over.
And I mean, how many more times you gotta read this?
And she'd be like, oh my god, she's still there.
She was, you were. I'm not a museum person, no.
She wanted to get going.
Conflict of interest?
Uh, I didn't do anything other than recite the state law and then just.
And you crossed out some other stuff that was there?
Eh, but just minor, it's all minor, it's all, it's not a big, nothing substantive there, just.
But it's recite the state law? Okay. Okay. Alright, um, section five point five six, now is this something with the council would recommend?
This is what we just talked about getting rid of.
Yeah, this is, you, um, actually wanted to move this out. I didn't, I didn't, um, know you did, but if you do, this is where you would propose to move this
Okay.
out of this document.
I, how do you guys, how does the district feel about this right here? Um, I think it definitely talks about, cause she, we're gonna have board members that are gonna go and complain about staff.
And you, you can, you have, well, you have every right to complain about the superintendent, you have every right to ask his opinion on, you have every right to discuss somebody in executive session if you notice them. You don't need to have it in your bylaws.
I, the thing I don't like about this, Marion, is just that, that this makes it sound, this was suggested by the council.
To take it out?
No, this was.
Put it in?
Yes, this comes from the council. This comes from the council completely. And we've already stated that we're gonna take out the superintendent piece, but I think even this, um, you really shouldn't be talking about people's performance, except.
Am I reading the wrong section? Isn't this called board that would concern the superintendent?
No.
No, non-supernintendent.
Oh, I'm on the wrong section.
So that's just dealing with employees.
Five point five, is it, I'm like, are you on this one?
Five point five.
On the cleaner one or are you on the older one?
Yes. This is the, the one that should be the seventh, the old one.
Alright, I'm looking, I must be on the wrong one, I'm looking at the superintendent.
Am I looking at the right, what, the page six one?
The fu- the fuller version, are you looking at the fuller version, the longer one?
Oh, no, I was looking.
Oh, I'm looking at the cleaner one too, so.
Yeah, I was comparing.
Oh, I was looking at the wrong thing.
We already, the, the, we already.
No, you were looking at the right one.
Five point six.
We already agreed to take out the superintendent and put the superintendent in a governance policy.
So it says board member concerns about employee performance?
Yeah, yeah.
What does that mean? Like non-employee, like non?
Well, like people who are district employees and somebody has a concern and.
I think that should live in another policy too, I think.
I also just think it's a nerve-wracking thing to do, because what Marion started to say, and I fully agree with this, you shouldn't be talking about district employees in the back room. It should be in a board discussion
That's true.
where the person has been given notice and knows it's above board, no pun intended. I just, I don't like this idea that there's this informal way of complaining about employees. I just think that's, that will invite gossiping and undermining of district staff. And I think that would be very demoralizing. It'll, it, they're, it already happens in school districts where, where you've got like person A talking about district employee B.
So they need them. Oh, yeah.
And it's happening behind the scenes and it harms people, and I think it is a bad, it invites a bad practice.
What you think that?
So.
I agree with you.
I agree with you. I hate it.
I definitely agree.
If I can say that again.
We agree as well. If you have, what they're trying, what the council is trying to do, I think, is say, try to resolve your conflicts with people informally and amicably. I think that's the good intent of the council. But from what I've seen in districts, it could be an invitation to have backroom conversations about employees without notice to the employee and it could let negative commentary fester without the airing of a process where you put it in front of the board and you give the employee a chance to hear it, know what's going on and be able to answer it, but.
Alright, so let's say a member of the board.
Yeah.
Gets a call from some concerned parents, um, about a principal, like, let's say you were the, St. Peter's School was here in the district, you've seen all the publicity about the principal.
Right.
What if you, you, you get a concern, alright? Don't you need to bring that concern to the superintendent and ask the superintendent to investigate that? Like, I think Sarah, there has to be some, the school committee members, the ten members have to have some notice and something to know, like, if I'm having a problem with Marion Carroll, I need to bring that concern, as a school committee member, and then if you don't talk to the others, cause then you'd have a.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Right.
I need to say, I need to bring that to the superintendent or to the deputy superintendent and say Marion's not doing a good job running classical high.
Well, if, if it's, I, I get.
But I think they have a right to do that as a committee. What if they get that information, what are they supposed to do with it?
So I, what you're saying is, this on the other hand encourages the board member to hear a complaint
and call the superintendent.
superintendent, instead of just.
Talking among themselves, right? Right, I mean, like, if you get a complaint about me and I'm running classical high school, and I'm talking classical because that's where I, if I'm gonna be principal, that's where I'd like to be, um, you need to, um, you need to be able to say to the superintendent or the deputy superintendent or the chief and staff.
I heard them, this parent.
Hey, I'm hearing that this principal is doing X, Y, and Z, and then he needs to, with the superintendent or the deputy or the chief and staff or whoever you bring to needs to do an investigation for you, and then.
If it's serious or, right.
Right, or, or call, make a phone call, or can you please talk to this parent? Cause this parent is complaining about Marion Carroll, and then the superintendent or the deputy or somebody contacts that person, and can, and in fact.
That's a very good counterargument.
So, I mean, we need to be able to say to the school committee, I mean, that's your job to oversee this district, but I don't want you talking among yourselves.
Yeah.
Well, it's your job, so, so it's your job to, to hear from the public and then to
To bring it to the superintendent.
turn that over to the superintendent. So, so I think what Marion's saying, and now that she's put it that way, that makes a ton of sense.
Exactly.
It helps make sure that you, you don't, um, you don't gossip among yourselves about a district employee, and you know as a board member, I'm not supposed to, you get a call about Marion as the principal of classical, instead of going to Night Jean and Jenny and saying, I heard this. You know that you're supposed to go right to the superintendent, not talk to others and let the superintendent handle it.
I agree.
Yeah, I think you're.
And.
But, and that's what you, and that's what you're supposed to do, in other words, you're supposed to say, you call the superintendent, you say, I just heard that Marion Carroll is, I don't know, dismissing students early or isn't, you know, is, is not doing a good job of overseeing, um, I don't know, state testing or something. You need to, you need to bring it to the superintendent and then the superintendent needs to follow up on it. It's not for discussion or to bring up at a meeting or anything, you've gotta bring it to the superintendent.
And it does say limited to actions which are illegal, egregious violations of board policy, and actions which are harmful in bullets.
So, I'm thinking if today we can, in the process to add the leadership responsibility and this, let's say, again the principal from Central Court and a Wichita superintendent and what, what happens next. I think that the, the leadership also should be, like
You mean the whole leadership should be across?
Include it, I, no, maybe like to, to make sure like
Just the president knows that.
The president knows that.
Yeah, but that's how the sec- this, yeah, I know what you're saying.
This just says, this just says that any board member should bring it to, cause you might get something that doesn't go to Tyrell.
Yes.
And the idea is that you don't bring it to your board leadership, you bring it to the person who is in charge of personnel.
Yeah, I wanna make sure, my thing is, I wanna make sure that the, it's actually being followed and also, um it's, the president is also aware about what's going on.
But I think, I think, so you as a board member, Jenny as a board member, if you have concerns, you guys have to have the capacity as well as board members to go to the superintendent and say, this is my concern, you know, can you take care of it? And then they follow up directly with you, cause you're gonna be a supervisor as well of the school system. So I wouldn't include the chair in that. I would just say, no, that's your responsibility as individual board member to follow the policy and say, I'm gonna go speak directly with the superintendent. And then if you want, you can follow up with the chair, but I think you should get the description of.
Well, I think that's where it gets tricky, so once you give it to the superintendent to investigate, then once you start having conversations with each other, that's where it gets into the money war.
Correct, but.
Right.
No, I, but I don't think, so, we wanna add that in policy, but we can't dictate what board members are gonna do with the information after.
But, and again, the other thing you can do is, remember, superintendent, you, your control isn't over the principal of classical or the principal of Central, it's over the superintendent. So if you have a concern that the superintendent didn't follow through in investigating something that you need to be investigating, that's when you bring it into his evaluation or her evaluation that, you know, maybe we need to, you didn't follow through on this or you didn't follow through on that. Do you know what I'm saying? In other words, it's superintendent.
I get both sides of it, cause I think, I think what Paula is concerned about, concerned to be a little.
And I think Night just.
We don't want a discussion, yeah.
A quorum, rolling quorum or something?
Well, I just, I.
It's not, it's not even that, it's worse than that. It's worse than a rolling quorum.
Well.
Can, can she explain it? Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, because if, if somebody comes to you with a concern and you hand it over to the superintendent to investigate. Investigation has to follow the normal process, and if that person is going to be discussed by board, it needs to be noticed. You're discussing it by board and you're not noticing that person, that you're discussing them. And it could get bigger, right? Because he tells you, then, um maybe he also like feels like really some sort of way about it, tells another board member, now you're having a discussion about somebody um, somebody's performance, you're, you could be putting their job in jeopardy, you're not following the correct process, and you don't even know if it's true yet, right? So, um, you have to allow the investigation, you have to allow the superintendent to do the investigation, you have to allow the person to be noticed.
It's good to just go directly.
Right.
Once they go into executive set, that there's gonna be a meeting, an executive session about their performance if the investigation proves that there was something happening, right?
So maybe it should include an admonition that not only board, if a board member and I would say becomes convinced, instead of becomes concerned, maybe we should say receives information.
Right, about the performance, that, that.
About the performance of the, of a district employee, they must bring that, that falls into that category, they must bring it to the superintendent.
I, really, like, I think what.
And, and not inform the chair, and, and maybe, maybe have the language be
Right, yeah.
just only the superintendent and shall not discuss this with any other board member, because what Paula is concerned about is that something comes in from a parent or a complainant. You have to do something with that information, because you're trying to channel it to the superintendent, but you cannot and should not share that with the chair or the president or anybody else, because it could be a lie. And if it's a lie and you start talking about it, it can damage reputation before anything is really investigated.
It can also prejudice the way other people are feeling about things when it goes into executive and you have to make a vote on it.
Well, and at that point, I would tell you that if you were part, if you were part of the initial discussion, then you would recute yourself from any vote, because you, you, you knew information, then you don't know whether it's true or not, and you were involved, and I would say, if I were sitting with you, I'd say, right, you have to recute yourself because you.
Well, if they, if you get information and then the superintendent says, I looked into it and it is baseless, I don't know that you.
Well, no, if they were all discussing it, it happens.
Oh, oh, yeah.
No, not you, yeah.
Yeah, I think you have to, I think we, to button this up legally, I think we should, and to make sure that that notice provision under the Open Meetings Act is really honored. I think if a board member receives information of concern.
Is it included another board member's dangerous and could potentially.
Yeah.
See, of concern, and I, I think we can describe it as illegal, egregious violations.
But I, as the president, I don't have any, you know, or any president don't.
I don't think the president should be on board.
The president doesn't really have any power like that anyway as individual board member, so.
Right.
It's, it really should be with me.
They must bring concern to only, directly and exclusively to the superintendent
Yes.
and, and, uh, superintendent, not the board present, president, such curbs shall be limited to, uh, actions which are illegal, I don't know about egregious violations of board policy, what is that?
Violations, I don't know if you need egregious, but violent.
Okay.
Well, is it?
Violation, I mean, you got, you have a concern, um.
I mean, you got, you have a concern, um. Okay, egregious violations of board, are there actions?
You take out egregious and put violations.
Okay, violations.
Um.
And, and, and then we could say the board members shall not discuss or disclose this.
Well, really quick, I just want Night to, to continue, finish his point, I don't wanna completely shut him out. Um, if you had anything else, I don't know if you feel comfortable with that.
Yeah, I'm trying to process this, but, and, and also, um, you know, because we have people that are appointed and and also elected as well, that were presenting in different regions, and also as a board member, sometimes, um, you, you might attend, um let's say you, you go visit some school that's not in your region, um, in that case, do you, do the president also notify the member of the region because then, okay.
I think the message of the council on that, if you can remember, is what AJ said, is you have to try not to think of yourself as coming from a particular region, but start thinking of yourself as representing a whole. So even though it's understandable for you. So even though it's understandable for you to feel a certain allegiance to a particular constituency. You're trying to get yourself into the space where everybody matters the same way because you're acting not just for that region, but for the entire community. I think that's what AJ would say.
Like when you add the came for dual languages and the entire city needs to have, you know, you prefer they have dual language.
I mean, it's it's hard because you come from a community, but I think it's it's important to protect reputationally district employees because this is where it will happen. It it will happen that people are gonna call you and complain about a teacher or they're gonna complain about a principal. It happens all the time. And it it can be damaging like that. It can it can really undermine a staff member very quickly and it can be a lot.
Destroy somebody's reputation.
And and people's professional lives go um get really compromised really, really fast. And you have to have a superintendent who's the gatekeeper of this and has a process in place to make sure that serious stuff is being addressed because obviously if it's really serious, you know, you gotta take care of it, but I think I think that's I think that kind of it it's a reminder to you, you can't tell Tyrell and Jenny, you just you gotta hold it in, go to the superintendent. You know, you could follow up with the superintendent and say, did you look at that and and how did that pan out and the superintendent can tell you and there's nothing wrong with that. The superintendent could say, I looked into it. It's not substantiated um but.
Or investigations in process.
Or the investigations in process.
Yeah, that's your statutory statutory right. You have the right to do that, so.
Talking.
Because you have to remember, who was gonna bring the person if say the person did do something wrong? Who's gonna be bringing them forward with a recommendation for suspension intervention? So the superintendent, right? Um, the board chair can't do that. He doesn't do the investigation, he isn't involved in those pieces, but the superintendent, that that is his job and you all supervise the superintendent. So if he's not doing that, um then you have that other authority right to say, hey, superintendent, that was your job and you didn't do it and this is the the consequence of you not doing that.
And if there is something problematic, you need to be, as as was said, you know, not involved in the matter and having a be able to have a fresh look at the situation so that you don't have a complaint in your head and you can hear the evidence fresh without um.
The bias.
Yeah.
And it's very likely the superintendent himself could have handled could have handled it, he could have disciplined the employee. And all he would come back to is say, I've taken care of it and appropriate discipline has been has been handled, you know, things like that, so.
It might be a written warning, it might be a verbal, don't do that again, you know.
It's progressive.
Yeah, or meet or could be meet with the parent because the parent felt unheard and and then it gets.
Okay, is that something staying in the bylaws or move it out?
Well, I think we can leave it in if you want and it would say.
I think we need to clean it up a little and yeah.
And leave, uh-huh, and leave it in.
I mean I think the I think you could leave it in.
All right, leave that piece in.
But I also think you should, so your committee members who are gonna be told they have to read the bylaws know what they do and like especially a new one, not you know.
Got it.
Yeah.
I need to know what to do. All right, I got a complaint, I'm calling the superintendent.
Oh, got it, okay.
I agree. I'm new, so I I need directions and instructions.
It's found, right, yeah.
Any instructions.
Yeah, it's a it's a here's what you should do in this situation. And then the other piece that I wanted you to notice that I did modify a little is that if it's really serious, you call the police and I just put appropriate public official. Cause it could be D C Y F, it could be the police, it could be, I don't know. Those are the only two I could think of.
Okay, but we can let's move along.
Okay, so you you you're okay with edits?
Yeah, we'll edit that piece out, we'll edit that. Staff who reports directly to the board.
Who is this? Who is this like board members who I don't know who staff who would report directly to you?
I don't even know who this says.
I don't understand why this section is even here.
I I don't.
So there's nobody that reports to you other than the superintendent.
And that's what we covered.
Right.
And this this is again the council's suggestion, so they may come from districts where there are
Other.
like other people who report to the board and they're trying to distinguish between district staff and board staff.
Uh-huh.
I that's my guess. I don't get it, but I left it in. If you wanna strike it, it's.
I don't know that anybody reports to you other than the superintendent.
Right, well, right now I know that there's not, but under local control, there will be um.
Well, no, it'll still just be the superintendent, well.
It will be. I know the way the statute's written, but I also know that there's something called common law for governance that has a separation between the two between board members having a distinction of staff members that help roll out their governance functions. Um, so under the what is it, under Nick Heeman, um under what's the guy's name, uh Keith Olivera? They always had staff that reported directly to them. Um, that's something I would like to get some legal clarification on.
So in some districts, there is a Martha that is just the board's secretary.
Right. There there used to be here.
Right, right.
That's what in other words, it's all like long.
There used to be, remember, remember um um, who am I thinking of?
But but again, you're right, but Nick, there was one person and it's not even maybe not normal, but.
It it used to be a board.
It was actually two.
Yvonne Graff.
Yeah.
It was Yvonne and it was Sinek and it was Sinek.
Yvonne Graff.
Sinek was the clerk, Yvonne was the director of policy and plan.
Yvonne Graff was the policy person.
She was actually here when I first got her.
And she and she reported directly to the board?
To yes, to Nick Heeman.
As I said, there are some school committees that do have their own administrative assistant and that person works for the board, yeah.
But I still don't think this is a need to have it in here, right?
No, because in that if you don't like that person, fire him. You know what I mean? That person would get fired if the board didn't want that person.
You still wouldn't talk about them except in closed session with notice.
I I can see this, yeah.
That's true.
Yeah, I I think it's much ado about nothing at this point.
Okay, what you guys feel?
I need some clarification because I'm here. I I'm thinking in my head like the leadership team meets with the superintendent, so the leadership informed us. Um, so when does that happen? So who do we report to you or the superintendent? Or anything, anything, anything related to the school board? Who do the board report to?
You gotta report to the community.
I know, but like in close in our in our meetings and our board like.
Oh, if you have like a concern about uh like a staff member?
No, no, like like a lot of times I don't know how your meetings are with the superintendent.
Got it, okay.
So who who do I get the information from?
Oh, so for example, if you have something on the agenda, yeah, you go through your open present.
I know. Okay, yeah, there's actually beneath it, there's a section that we're gonna get to that talks a little bit about that.
Okay.
But um I think, are you talking about in general, like if it's different?
Yes.
I think she said if there's like different topics um or certain things that is discussed, like I I think you're saying something else, Jenny. Are we covering?
No, but that's just just that's just.
You're talking about how do you communicate board issues to the leadership? And that's that goes to the functioning of the board and the agenda setting, I think.
Okay, okay.
I think that's some of it, but this particular section is
We'll get there, yeah.
is really for districts that have at least a number of people who don't report to the superintendent and just report to the board, which at this point we don't have.
No.
Okay, so I don't think.
You can just strike this piece out. We'll get to what you said, Jenny.
I think.
Mm-hmm. But wait, you feel comfortable with that, Night striking it out? Okay.
Okay, now this next one is the language. This is how board members resolve problems with each other. This may be some of what you're talking about.
Maybe.
So.
Five point nine?
Yes.
Okay, I I think I don't.
I think seven.
This should we just like move this out though to another policy, like it's just too much, I think.
You have no control. Like you can't fire a board member. You can't say a board member, we don't want you anymore, we're gonna, cause it's up to now, well, your five are appointed and five are elected. On committees that are elected, I simply say, it's the it's the voters that would vote that person out. You don't have any control over. You can.
But but let me make a counterpoint to this. This this group, this I agree.
I just simplify it a little bit, okay?
Okay, okay. Simplize.
Cause I know.
There's some merit to this.
Cause there are board members that do really quick, there are some board members that definitely want a process and the reason the council put this in was because there was some concerns earlier on this year between board members, so they sort of had this process take place.
Yes.
I just don't think that right now we should get into the weeds of it and I I would sort of move this. I think we already have a policy. I would just move this to a separate policy.
A governance policy.
Cause this is getting too into the.
So I think.
It's more like ethics.
Yeah, it's true.
Again, if you're mad if you're mad at a board member is doing something, you can talk about it, you could, you know, but you have no there's no policy there.
No, but what this does in the same way that in the same way that the in the same way that the other section was a reminder to the board member, don't talk about staff members with each other. This section is a kind of reminder to board members that they should be working to resolve conflicts in a way that doesn't escalate them. And it was and is an important thing to have in your governance playbook. Perhaps without step four, which I think is pointless.
But that's the one, that's the one I'm stuck on.
That's that's like the censure and all that stuff. I I don't even think it's legal.
It's not finding each other.
It's not legal. It 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 isn't, it's fine. I think up to step four or even just steps one and two that encourages the board to talk to each other before escalating. I mean, we we gave this out at that session that we had where people were having some initial growing pains with each other. And there was some positive feedback from certain board members, so I don't know that it's prudent to just chuck it. I also think you could simplify it to just steps one and two and forget about full board communication.
How you guys feel?
But I also think you need to simplify. You know, like one member having this, they are encouraged to have a communication with each other. I don't, I think you could put a simplified section in.
Yes, and and believe my, I actually did simplify this a little bit, but.
It's like pages.
I I know, I know. It was a whole treatise with a First Amendment interlude.
I wanna come when you're gonna take action, but I wanna come sit and watch taking that. You know you can't, I mean.
I wonder I wonder how much the fine is that you're gonna find each other.
So so what about steps one and two?
Board members, to me, like all of this like should be like 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 moved. Like if let's say have a problem with a board members. Uh, we chat to the president. Uh, at that time, if me I'm reaching out to the president, that means I really did try everything and there's some kind of tension. And I will hope the president trying to set up some form of meeting. Uh, to the president can meet with the other person, meet with me as well, trying to see where we can come together. But I don't think we don't, we don't need.
All this line.
All all of this.
And I think it addresses to what you just said, like some of that inhale.
Yeah.
And then it says if the if like the president is sort of part of the issue, then you go to like the Let's try to say, yeah, let's just work to simplify it. Can we do that and we'll send you both like a draft of it?
We want communication if you're having a problem.
Yeah.
How about a one paragraph, try to work things out together and go to the board.
Yes. Right. Go for fluffy and have a.
And go go to the board president if you can't work it out and use the board president.
Yeah.
It should also be separate, go fluffy, yeah.
Yeah, and also, yeah, I'm also thinking also, um, let's say there's also in the future, very good problem with the president and other board member itself. Uh, maybe we can add like this uh the board leadership. If you have an issue
Right.
that you can all um uh work with the other board member with. Then you communicate with the leadership, so the leadership can try to resolve that problem.
Yeah.
And that was the that was sort of the sense I got from the group when we did this, so why don't I take a crack at simplifying it to just one paragraph, exhorting board members to work to resolve it. And then if necessary, go to leadership.
Yeah, because, yeah, we can do all this meeting at the end of the day. There's nothing in the president, you know, can do. We have elected board members and also we have people that were appointed by the mayor and voted on by the city council. So, yeah, to get just.
And 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 Marion is a hundred percent right. I mean, there's like
It's ridiculous.
this censure and the.
And you're you're.
It just gets a little bit.
You're still passing an ethics board policy, right?
Yeah, I think we'll resume.
Yeah. Were you in my.
That's the code of management and principles. That's that's embedded in that.
Yeah. Yeah, so a lot of that, a lot of that.
That's what I was saying, uh we're gonna just.
We need to write that out in full.
Oh, you agreed to strike out the code of ethics?
No, 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 like that's the one you wanna articulate it. Night Jean said that.
Code of Ethics.
No, I thought that didn't um Congress Great City Schools um ask the board to come up with um, wasn't it? Maybe I'm using, am I?
I'm sorry.
Remembering incorrectly.
Oh, guardrails?
You're talking about guardrails.
No, no, I remember what they had on the timeline in ethics policy or in ethics.
Yeah, some they still.
Do you remember that?
I think so.
So wouldn't that all be captured in this? They do have on their timeline um in ethics. Yeah, I know, I remember correctly.
Yes. I would, I don't, I would probably, I think I would say, I would probably just recommend we just, I'm serious, move it to something separate. And then get some like buy-in and like a separate governance policy. Cause like she's there's something with ethics, then there's a code of conduct and then this is in the bylaw. I would just move it out. Or maybe if you wanna put the section there and say, go to X Y policy, so I don't know.
Remember simplify all of this and just put it in one.
So take it off and make it a governance policy.
And I'm.
That would be my recommendation, because I said it's really cute to.
Yeah, yeah. You can't, you can't, but I think we have one and I think the intentions of it was pure, or maybe not. I think it was made because of me, um, from my early days, but what I will say is that I do think if it's and it's just in a separate policy and then get sort of the full board buy-in or get like the policy to look, I think that it makes sense and they can use like two of these pieces, I don't know.
You know what, you know what I'm I'm wondering, there is a suggestion by the council that the board develop guardrails.
For us, for the board.
For for itself.
Yeah, maybe it's.
So this is a good example of a guardrail.
Right.
About how to handle yourself and what not to do as you govern because it's a guardrail. It's like, it's it's it is a guardrail.
Maybe enough of it, you cannot.
So maybe leave it in as a guardrail, a board guardrail. It could be kind of part of your self-evaluation.
But I would put put put, I would put that in like, if we're gonna do like those and guardrails for the board or guardrails for the board, I think it just makes sense to just have that in something separate.
Yeah. Okay.
And then probably specify some of this stuff in that.
Okay.
I just think it makes more, it just starts to get cluttered in the bylaws and you wanna make sure that this is a clean document for people to begin to read.
We just wanted to have be like two pages, right?
Yeah, those.
I don't know, they're they're trying to like make it shorter and.
Maybe.
No, no, I hey, I I've already cut through a lot, so.
Because if we're gonna have, what I'm saying is if we're gonna, if if the council's saying that there should be a policy on like ethics and we have one on code of conduct. I think it just makes sense to just merge all of that into one specific policy and then.
So why don't we call it the board guardrail policy that sort that sort of self
Something like that.
This is how you should behave and this is how you should resolve conflicts.
I agree.
They say you really need to put that in a policy to tell the board members how to behave.
Uh, it doesn't hurt, right?
It doesn't.
Because it's on video and if they're not behaving, then the voters have to vote them out, then they have.
Well, things like don't use social media. Don't.
But but again, even if they do.
They still can't do nothing.
Nothing I can do against.
But 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 even even if even if a board member violates a person's reputation or undermines a person's reputation by talking amongst themselves, it's still good to put it in the policy as go to the superintendent, so it serves.
That that's important. That piece I think it's important, but if.
Well, I think I think they.
But but if you tell a school committee member, they cannot go on social media and they do, there's nothing you can do about it. If you know what I mean? Sorry, you know.
But that's true of the whole, that's true of, the bylaws are not enforceable anyway, right?
So as you sat here for an hour and a half, she's telling you that all this is not going forward.
It's really, it's really a, it's really a guidance document to guide behavior so people know what the what the basic self, the the, these are the rules that we wanna try to live by. If people don't
Follow it.
Follow it, there's nothing you can do.
The board members don't follow this.
Right, right. I mean, that's true of the whole thing.
Yeah, no, I just let's just move it out to guardrails and we'll do a guardrail policy. I think that just makes more sense and then we can go into, you know, the details of what.
Censure, finding.
Board members can't, well, I think that should be out of there.
I agree. Okay, so that.
And I'm sorry, I know you guys are tired, you've been working all day. We're gonna try to fly through these uh pieces.
So that's going out and then meetings, quorum, voting, posting, those are all nothing major.
Meetings, no.
I mean, I I'm just.
No, nothing, nothing in. No, nothing, nothing in, what do you guys think, nothing there? So meetings, voting, all of that's state law, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good.
Yes. And the posting of meetings is all state law. Um, so one thing that Tyrell and I did talk about was workshops.
Really quick, before we get to workshops, um, business meetings, I did have a suggestion with that.
Oh.
I know I was just.
Um, I actually, you guys had your documents already, but I have this right here.
Posting of meetings, depending on the day, it's appointed within seven days before the meeting.
This was based on some of the feedback.
Can I stop you for one second?
Yes, ma'am.
I just had an offer. Under six point three posting of meetings.
Mm-hmm.
Do you really get materials seven calendar days before the meeting?
No, it's only created.
I think it's three.
Yeah, and I flagged in a comment there that A J had suggested it be even longer.
I think that's unreasonable because you're do, like today you did the agenda for, you did a draft agenda for what your meeting is gonna be next week. Well, by the time it's all put together, you're gonna get all this material. You're not gonna, it's already less than seven days. So I think seven.
Well, remember what A J said though? He was really emphatic.
Yeah.
But I don't.
But I think they're saying the same reason. I think this, they put that there too to be more transparent with the community of what's gonna be on there, but no governing body
Oh, you, what?
posts it seven days in advance.
Seven.
It's.
It's, we, I mean, for you to get material, it's unreasonable for her to have to get it ready in seven days.
So maybe, maybe we say the Monday or something like that, that, I don't know. Maybe it's that Monday before the Wednesday of the meeting or something.
This is up to you guys.
We usually do it the Friday.
So, so three days.
Oh, the Friday, okay.
If we change this to three days, I think it's reasonable.
Let's do three days, three, okay. I didn't say that right. I need some water.
Okay, three business days. Do you include the weekend or three business days?
No, three business, okay.
Oh, I need some water.
Okay.
My toe, my tongue rolled, so I must be tired. Uh, business meetings. I gave you all a document. This is based upon feedback that I had in fact gotten from board members earlier on about meetings in, uh, communities and then also the school board having a secondary location. I think I gave away all of my, uh, papers, so I don't even have it. Um, but it just sort of, oh, thank you. Oh, thank you. Um, it just kinda just clarified hopefully a process. I don't know. I would love to hear from P B S D. But it clarified the date, not the date, yeah, the date of when the meeting should take place, the time. We've been in the bylaws having six thirty for the, yeah, been in there since two thousand nineteen, but we've been holding our meetings at six o'clock for some time now, right, Lala? Um, so it specifies that. It talks about P C T A being a potential second location of the board. Um, also, one concern that there was, was that there wasn't like an overflow space. Um, and that was something that I had gotten feedback on. Um, even though we know downstairs is, but hopefully that's just a space, just in case we know that there's gonna be some capacities. But the main thing was board members wanted to have meetings in their locations. Now, I know it's a lot for like Martha being one staff member to be responsible for that. And then also, we don't know if schools will have the necessary equipment.
Right, a lot of.
Um, but I do think that that is something that I will sort of recommend and hopefully it get flagged to the school committee. I don't think it's something that is uncommon. We've done it before. But that's something that I think we should definitely get to look at.
That was feedback from the board. It's kinda like the, um, courts used to ride, they call it riding the circuit. So judges used to go from, they didn't have a courtroom. They had, when they heard cases, they went from on horseback from one place to another to hear cases. So people didn't have to travel horseback.
How long ago was that?
It's called riding, it's called riding the circuit. That's where circuit comes from.
So, you know, we talk about in the days when it was Little House on the Prairie and all this kinda stuff.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying it hearkens back to a time when people had.
So this, this, um, one thought or question, um, it, this is, this is written as a definite and we don't have the equipment yet. So I'm wondering about, um, allowing for some planning and budgeting and getting the, the right equipment, cause we don't have it. So the way this is written, um, we would be out of compliance immediately because I don't have that kind of equipment for us, um, to use yet. Like there's no budget for it yet.
Well, I think. I know the bylaws, this is unenforceable anyway, cause we're not under local control. Um, I think it's just sort of a guiding principle for when we get back under local control. That this be a process that takes place, um.
Then you might wanna write it that way. You might write it right that, um, you know, in the future, every attempt will be made.
Or we could say to promote a county.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's what's in there. It's, it's, do it that way. Every, in the future, every attempt will be made because it's not a bad idea.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
No, it's just we need some money.
But we don't have the, that makes sense, that makes sense.
But we don't have the money and the equipment, but in it, you know, in the future, every attempt will be made to do.
Don't make, don't make it sound as if it's a definite. You don't even gotta go into detail. Just put the note and then we just make sure that it's not like a.
How about, so, shall work to.
Attempt to.
Convene.
There we go, something like that.
Attempt to convene, it's.
That makes a lot of sense. Good flag.
Attempt to convene is not a definite, you know.
Yes.
And in the future, we don't know what.
And we, we can, it's, it's a good idea. It's, it's something else.
So it's like riding people.
It's like riding this certain. So that everybody's district.
Right.
It's certainly a good idea. We'll go there and horseback as Sarah said.
No, I think that's the way we do it.
And, but I think it should say, you know, in the future, every attempt will be made in that way.
How you feeling, Nate and Jenny? Okay. All right, we can move on.
Yep.
Workshops, uh, the council took out any discussion workshops and Tyrell thought it might be prudent to put something back in. So I took from a little of Barrington and a little, this is just language I pieced together, uh, totally up for grabs. To allow for non-business meetings from time to time, um, where you can strike workshops entirely your call. The current language is.
It's just a meeting in addition to a regular school committee.
It's an alternate, it's a non-business meeting that is, at least in theory, at least under the existing bylaws was very scripted, very planned and very regulate, regular. Like every month, there were two meetings, a business meeting and a workshop. And the workshop was planned in advance by the board to address certain topics.
Whatever presentations or things like that. It'd be a non-voting thing. It would just be information, right?
A deeper level. And more information, more of a dialogue.
It's crazy. The way, the, there's a whole policy on it too that goes into details and the board needs to know about H R, needs to know about this and that. It's a lot. It's like a lot.
And, and A J took it out, I think, because the council's emphasis is all that operational stuff, you don't need to know about it. That's delegated. But I think Tyrell was saying not so fast and you don't have to use workshops to just address up. Cause I, what I put in, um, inform and educate the board and the public on topics that are important. That was in the old policy. Uh, conduct oversight of the superintendent's implementation and management of the district. So there's a whole duty of the board to make sure that the superintendent is implementing all the policies in a meaningful way. But then the third thing is allow for a deeper and more focused discussion than can take it place at business meetings of the student outcome goals and adherence to guardrails. So you could structure these workshops to address anything on a deeper level. Um, or you could put in other items there. I, I just don't know that you wanna abandon a workshop idea. Um, the other point that Paula made, which was a really important one, is that workshops in Barrington, for example, were an opportunity for the public to be more systematically engaged. And one thought I had that I didn't write down here is instead of doing what Barrington did or does, which is to allow questions by the public after the workshop. So the superintendent and the school committee has a conversation about something and then people ask questions at the end. There's no reason that you couldn't structure a workshop to be a little like a listening session. Where you have a topic or an issue that you want to get community input and you actually break out into groups and you get a more formalized community feedback. I actually did that in, years ago in South Kingstown, when they were coming up with a transgender policy. And there were all different, it was a formal meeting, but we broke into groups and different parents and constituents talked about what was important in the policy and then it was delivered back to the board. So I think you want a placeholder that gives you some opportunity to be a little more creative. And it doesn't have to be just talking about physical plans or H R or something that is the superintendent's. But I leave to you to fill it in. I just know Tyrell wasn't so keen on getting rid of it entirely.
But there were sections that definitely need to get rid of. It was just too long.
But thi, but this one, you wanted something back.
Yeah, I would take out six thirty. Uh, I would probably put six o'clock there. Um, and I don't know if there's anything individuals need to know or have more clarity on. But I think I would just put six o'clock. And then I wouldn't put every fourth Wednesday. I would put like once quarterly or something like that. I think it's just too much that on the superintendent to have that every month.
Right, okay. Uh, would be convenient for workshops on a quarterly basis. And it says May, so you don't have.
But still, I think even May on a quarterly basis, Ty, if you.
Oh, yeah, May, yeah, that, that makes sense.
May on a quarterly basis.
Um, and I don't know if there's any other topic that you can think of that might be more appropriate and I yeah, I threw in the public participation in a vague way. Um, but I think it, it's a.
Any feedback we could, board members, just if you got any feedback on six point four two, just, uh, send it to Sarah. Right, and same for the superintendent's team.
I mean, I. Do you like it?
I like it because that's what the public is asking, like more engagement from us and from the superintendent. So if we have that leeway to.
And it's better than public comment where they just come up and talk at you. It's like a, it could be a structured opportunity to talk to the public or engage over something that is.
Specific.
Specific, exactly.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
You agree?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on.
Hi, we, we can, yeah, I see, we can.
Okay, okay, change to six.
But, but, but Sarah, wait, no.
Sorry, I, I agree, yeah, we can structure like the listening session and, uh, what Jenny said. During the listening session, the summit is what the community wanted to be directly informed from, um, the board members. So.
Okay, so I'm gonna change it to six and say on a quarterly basis, May on a quarterly basis.
May, mm-hmm. Okay.
And I'll strike unless deemed convenient, blah, blah, blah. Okay, so those edits, executive session, I, I, this is just.
The law, right?
The law.
Okay.
And special meetings, this is in.
I think you wanna add five members. Is it five members? Yeah, it was four out of nine. I think you put five on. I think you flagged it in this, on the side, have the special meetings.
Oh, okay, I said four out of nine or five out of ten.
Five.
Yeah.
Five.
We go to five.
That's only happened.
Right, but again, it's special meeting.
Okay.
It's as if some, you know, if half of your school committee needs a special meeting, I think you need to have a special meeting.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Um, and then there's emergency.
And again, it's the law of when you can do an emergency.
Right, yeah, emergency is very specific. Special is less restricted.
Okay.
Great.
Do that.
I mean, an emergency, let's say for example, I keep, no, I don't wanna do something bad. Let's say something bad happens in one of your schools right now. You may have to call an emergency meeting tomorrow to figure out how you're gonna deal with it, recommendations to superintendent or.
Kind of flood or a furnace blew out.
Or, you know, like all of a sudden, uh, the union's calling a strike. Well, the superintendent's gotta, you know, you might have to have an emergency meeting to see how you're gonna address it. Those are the kinds of things that would be an emergency, where you don't have to post the forty-eight hours required.
Absolutely, okay.
Immediate action to protect the public.
Right.
Mm-hmm. A pandemic.
Yeah.
Stalker, uh, somebody, you know.
Yeah, in the past, they've.
Let's think about. No, let's not talk about the minions, no.
Yeah, yeah, in the past, they've done it for a bunch of things.
Okay, so special is okay with amending four to five. Emergency is really restricted to by law.
And then.
And minutes, uh, that's just, that's basically the law with a little embellishment.
Okay.
And I just copied what you already had.
I think the agenda stuff was agenda stuff, but now I know there's a ad hoc thing already on the agenda. But I think if we could just go through maybe the pieces that they recommended about how to get information if they want on the agenda to the, to the chair. We could just talk about that piece.
Well, this whole first thing about yes, no, and maybe, that came from the council.
What is the typical process there? Like, what is the?
What, what he's trying to do, A J's trying to do is say, don't put anything on the agenda that doesn't pertain to goals and guardrails. That's essentially what he's messaging there. And he's breaking it down and he's saying, if it's goals, guardrails are legally required, yes. If it's about personnel, vendors, or anything in the superintendent's bailiwick, no. Maybe if it's something that's kind of important. I don't know. On the one hand, I think it's helpful. On the other hand, it's not typically what you see in bylaws.
If you have a committee that's not working on agenda, which if you do, right, you have a committee.
They have a. Mm-hmm.
So shouldn't you find out what that committee is actually doing before we put it in here?
I agree, but they're not specifically.
They're working on like the items piece of the agenda.
Yeah, they're not working on how you put.
A process of it.
This kinda goes to the core of what the council's been training these folks on. Th- this is like, if you could put in one page, what they really care about is that you talk about student outcomes and everything else. You put on the consent agenda. A J suggested you get things a month in advance from the district, I, he did. So that when it, when it finally gets vetted, you don't even have to talk about it. It just gets, just gets all, no, it's unrealistic, but.
Which.
Is, is, does he work a lot in Rhode Island to know what we do on Rhode Island agenda?
It's Texas.
I, I think.
Right, I mean.
I think he's trying to, well, cause when I'm reading this, it, it makes, it makes sense. Um, in terms of the things that you wouldn't put on the agenda anyway, right? You can't, you can't discuss personnel unless it's gone through all the proper.
Right.
processes. And then if it has, then it goes on the agenda the way that it's allowed. So it's a no unless it's done all that pre-work, right? That makes complete sense. Vendors, um, that definitely would not be on your agenda as a discussion item. It'd be in consent because it's already gone through finance.
Right.
Right? Um, resolutions, that's just a feel-good thing. Um, it, resolutions, they have no weight. And so he's recommending, now you might think differently and feel differently, but he's recommending it's just not a good use of time. And then not public, you can't put on anyway. So the only one on the no that you might feel differently about is resolution because all the rest of them are legally knows anyway.
Yeah, it's more of a. I just, I, I mean, you could, you could just have a one-liner that says the agenda should devote fifty percent to student outcomes and, and leave it at that. Because that's the essence of what he's prodding you to commit to.
Well, if everything legally, like, like Dr. Dillon said, if everything legally by law prevents us from doing most of it, then maybe just a, a one-line, a makes, one or two or three line that makes sense. Just saying it needs to be fifty percent on outcomes.
Just the first paragraph.
Correct.
The board intends to devote at least fifty percent of its total public meeting time each month to focus on student outcomes. This work includes time expended on setting student outcome goals or monitoring progress. To accomplish this, the board will exercise very intentional design and control, period. And then leave everything else.
But, but now, is there a process for board members wanting to bring something to the?
That is not in here. So if you want to draft something, this would be a good place to do it.
Okay, and that, was that what you was discussing?
No, no.
We're gonna talk, cause I think I missed, and okay, we'll talk. Okay, let's do that, what you said, and then I'll speak to her about, about other stuff.
Yes.
But do you think you should have something in the bylaws?
I think we should. I, I don't think I should be like a gatekeeper or any president should be a gatekeeper of the agenda, you know?
So do you want to propose something here for the full board to contemplate about how things get on the agenda that allows, I know Steve talked about this and had concerns about this, that there be some mechanism by which board members can express something that be put on the agenda.
Ask what?
Mm-hmm. So, the way that we did it in, in my, they don't really, the way we did it in my previous district, which made sense, was on the agenda.
How do you get that now?
There was a section where board members could request a topic for the next meeting.
Right.
And then the board would discuss whether or not they wanted to have that topic. They would vote.
We, oh, that answer.
And if they all, or if the majority agreed, then it would go on the next meeting.
That's.
That's right. That was, I think, I was, I remember this. I because.
That's so smart.
So that is in Barrington, agenda setting is a topic on the agenda.
Mm-hmm. On the agenda.
Yeah.
And you, and you can't, the weird thing is, it's a little weird under the open meetings app.
Can't discuss the thing. You can just say you want to discuss the thing, nothing.
But, but how do you give notice? How do you give? How do you give, so here's the sort of.
There's an issue with that now.
Right, so how do you give notice of an agenda setting topic?
You can't discuss it. Yeah.
That's a legal thing, huh? I don't know that.
Because we're actually in an open meeting act, because people that are coming in need to know what exactly is you're talking about. That was, we had that on a lot of agendas a few years ago.
But if they don't talk about that.
It's just, right.
No, no, but even, so let's, let's, let's just be really concrete. So somebody in the public, somebody on the the board wants to talk about, I'm gonna take a, like, give me a controversial topic.
Something, ripped transportation, yes.
Ripped transportation, and 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 the board member really, really wants to talk about it at a future meeting. So he says to Tyrell, I am, I am going to propose under the agenda setting topic. That at a future meeting, we talk about ripped transportation, here's the open meetings act question. Shouldn't the notice to the public tell the public that a member of the board is going to put that on the agenda?
So.
So the public can see that a, at least one board member is concerned about that and.
So here's how we fix it, we have agenda items and the, we have to put something in the wherever. Say if a board member is going to propose an agenda item, they have to let Martha know at least a week before.
Yes.
So she lists it under agenda items.
But so the agenda item that's going to be proposed to be put on the future agenda.
Is already written out.
Is noticed to the public.
Exactly.
So you don't just have, and I do remember telling uh Mike, Mike Nisori, that this template was not good enough.
There was an issue we could get.
Because you wouldn't know if you were a member of the public, what was gonna be proposed for future discussion.
The last thing to do, you can have it written that if you want to propose something, you tell, you give it to Martha, like at least a week before. So that when she does the agenda, under new items, it can be listed. It doesn't need to say who's who's requesting it, it simply just has to have the topic.
Propose agenda items. One week before.
That'll give you enough time, right, Tyrell, yeah.
Um.
And then you don't discuss it that night, you just decide whether or not you are going to put it on the next agenda.
Right, and you decide whether you're gonna put it on.
Which is hard, because you're gonna.
Who will get, who will get to decide that?
The board.
Their whole, whole voice.
Yeah, the board side.
Okay.
So like, you say, I wanna talk about ripped transportation, Jenny says, well, I really wanna talk about.
Health and, um, anything.
Any, like, like, health and the 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 bad food.
Vaccine policy.
The.
Vaccine.
Bad food in the cafeteria, like, they just, it's just dragging everybody down.
Uh-huh.
So then the board gets it and you decide as a board, we're gonna do Jenny's and not ripped at the next meeting. And we'll just have a rolling set of suggestions.
So the board just voted, no discussion.
They're waiting, yeah, no discussion, what about, what about if the board, let's say you give them something that needs to be addressed and the board voted no.
Right, right, but, but let's.
Can you bring it again?
Of course.
Bring it every meeting until somebody, until somebody gets it on the agenda.
Okay.
My, I didn't know. I think you need to put a little bit of language in there, I mean, I assume everybody's gonna be above board and be, like, what if somebody wants a topic that is.
Like then and then.
No, 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 I'm trying to think of the words, what if it's a topic? Not controversial, because we discussed controversial topic.
That's not appropriate for the board.
And not appropriate for the board to talk about.
We wanna talk about the um terrible teacher in in school B.
Exactly, I think the chair has to have some authority not to put it on the agenda.
And that's where.
About Wednesday meeting.
Yes.
That's where the the goals and guardrails focus becomes important. Because there are just some items that are delegated that you really don't have a board to discuss.
So let's say, for example, you call Martha and you say, I wanna put this topic on, you're gonna have to look at them ahead of time and say, this is not appropriate for the agenda.
It it should probably be more than seven days, because how often do we meet on agenda setting as a leadership, once a month?
Right. Which needs to change.
So if it's, if it's every, if it's twice a month, for example, then I would put ten days before.
Mm-hmm.
That gives you time when you meet with the superintendent to have the list from Martha and you to say, yes, that can go on, or no, that's not appropriate, and I'm not putting it on.
Okay.
And you, you can confer with the district or legal council to say, is this, is this okay even?
So you.
And I mean, you don't necessarily have to make that decision, but you're right, you need to be able to vet it so that all of a sudden.
It's not written on the agenda that comes out to the public that night.
That, that we're gonna discuss something illegal.
Right.
And then what should I? Yeah, I'm just saying, so let's say a board member is being, um, something that needs to be discussed and the president. Decide, okay, this is might not be appropriate, so why don't we just do it the way we used to do it before, you know, trust the leadership and the president, his job. If I have a concern, bring it to the president, discuss with the president to be added to the agenda, I think this is creating the whole process. Um, and even for the, um, like any resolutions, any things like, I want the board to be discussed, according to president.
So I think.
You know, or email the president, oh.
If we could do this, if we could probably just possibly add a a piece in there, I don't know, we can talk about this more. But like a piece that says if it's something that the the president agrees to put on immediately, then it goes on. Or something like that, maybe, I don't know, I don't know if that's breaking the rules, um, but I get what he's saying. But I do, I also, if you get so, if you want a a topic on there, say you wanted a topic on there about something I just don't believe in. Um, and you want it on there, but according to the bylaws, I as the president can just strike it down and say, no. You're not gonna feel comfortable with that, cause you feel as a board member, you have the right for that to get on there. So you would wanna bring that before the full board and say, no, this is what I want, can you guys vote on it? And if there's like a a process in place, that'd be able to take place.
And also we have, um, um, we have elections and we have also, we just did like a, um, leadership evaluation. The last time, then you can bring it up there. I'm just, I I'm I'm just worried about us like.
Your add, like layers.
Or making too many layers.
Layering another.
Too many, so let's do this, let's table it, let's just table that piece that Knight's talking about, we'll table it for now. Let's possibly, what if we striking this out, let's table it to our next, let's not make that recommendation to the committee yet.
Okay.
Let's table it and we'll get more clarification from Knight.
But.
Or if we can do this, maybe like, can we, I don't know, is it a will and qual, maybe not, I won't say that.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, let's just strike that out for now, we'll discuss it for the next meeting when we meet, we won't make that as a recommendation yet.
But you do want to strike the the stuff on, you know, yes, no, maybe.
Yes, and maybe we can put the the committee still in discussion about that process or something like that.
Right, but you you want the first paragraph that says fifty percent.
Yes.
And then, and then the yes, no, maybe, which is, is is going, that's getting deleted, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, 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 yes.
Mm-hmm, and say that, yeah, and say the ad hoc committee's gonna.
But we have a placeholder for proposing agenda items.
Yes.
Like a, just how to propose and vet appropriate.
There we go.
Okay, and we'll just.
I mean, we'll discuss it more.
Place holder, how to proposing. Agenda items. And just call it that and leave it unclear as to what you're gonna do.
Correct.
Okay.
Maybe that.
But you're saving so much paper.
That's true. Um, I think a lot of this on agenda gets into the other stuff.
That's in it, that is the ad hoc.
I will say one thing, though, I think I spoke to um Dr. Dillon and and the superintendent and the chief of staff, Lisa, on this. Um, what is it, I think it says like call to order and roll call. Um, is there a way we can just have one, cause a lot of government bodies just has like roll call that's called to.
I already weighed in on this.
You can absolutely do that.
I I already said, you just.
Yeah, read it.
So that's coming on T one.
Okay.
But you're getting, yeah, you're getting that.
Now, there's one other thing I would make.
And I just wonder where the pledge of allegiance is gonna go.
Oh, no, it's there.
I know. Good agent.
Um, let's not do that on camera.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry, sorry, just joking.
One last thing, though, I was gonna say, um, it says superintendent comments. Could we change that to like, and I'll speak to the agenda, maybe it's updates, superintendent updates?
We did.
Oh, you did? Oh, okay, even there.
But can I just say something if you're working with the ad hoc committee that has really irked me about the way you, you guys have to tell us what the comments are?
Oh, yes.
And you don't, you just leave it open-ended and it's a.
It's, that's a violation of the opening act, I've had a, I've already had a ruling that that's a violation.
Exactly. It is.
So if he's gonna talk about personnel, he's, he's got a list, personnel, he's got a.
Yes. You have to be a hundred percent specific.
Okay.
He's got a list what his.
And and it, like, it can be summary, I mean, I've got one socket doing it right, finally, but it has to be, you know, graduation day, blah 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 day.
Right, right.
It can be a bullet, but.
Not a problem.
Okay.
He ha, it has to be specific.
Be specific.
Okay.
Otherwise, you are vulnerable.
No confessions, just.
So is that something listed in the bylaws that we have to?
No, it's in the open meetings act law.
And not on the agenda one week.
Okay, perfect, okay.
Yeah.
And and when you do that, you just wanna be specific, but the rest of that's coming from the other committee to you to fill in that detail.
Yeah.
So now we're at guardrails and we're done.
Well, um, consent agenda, I had a question on that one, though. Um, because it says that. Three board members must request an item to make the move from the consent agenda, right? And by seventy-three hours prior to the board meeting, is that the same?
Okay, isn't that on the ad hoc committee for board agenda?
They're working on that, but, cause, I mean, it should be anybody that wants to remove it can remove it that night. And if you remove that topic, then it just goes to your business.
Okay.
And you.
So, like, for example, if I'm in your committee and I say, I wanna remove, I don't know, whatever you're doing.
Like.
Policy on blah blah blah, then that then would be removed from consent and would go to business.
Yeah. Yeah, like the agenda setting is gonna be on consent, and I I really think it should be discussion, but but it is on consent. Now, it would require three people to say, let's move it off seventy-three hours prior to the meeting that has a discussion.
Yeah, what came, why seventy-three hours?
I don't know, this is.
But, it should, you have to do it that night, and it doesn't really matter, because it's on your agenda, you're not filing, violating the opening act, you're just saying, we wanna talk about the agenda.
Seventy-two is.
So that would then go to your business, so you can have a conversation and then vote on it.
Is the ad hoc um agenda group getting input from you?
Yeah.
Is anyone meeting with them?
With the agenda, yeah, I was like with AJ and and Cindy too, like, so we, we, and we're bringing, um, well, not we, Melissa's bringing her draft forward.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so we had the agenda setting meeting for this twenty-second, and we've talked about should this go on consent or should it go on discussion? If it's on consent, somebody can bring it off immediately, I think that makes sense. But I do think people are gonna have questions about that, and if they're required to, uh, give you notice seventy-three hours in advance, it seems.
They don't get, they don't get the agenda, seventy-two hours, it's the same.
Well, also, that doesn't make any sense, so, it should be.
No. It, most committees, that night.
That night, people, people, people move things off that night, they just say, I want to.
I want to move this off.
And it's just, I want this out, and it goes.
I wanna talk about it, so.
But I assume that's, um.
Something for the agenda committee?
I think, and.
The agenda committee, um, you think, based, had it differently, where it was just like, anyone should move something, I like that.
Well, that's the way it should be legally.
All right, so the last, so the everything else is being moved to the, every, all the other stuff is being moved to a separate policy, the meeting.
Even God, because I think with God, the board, the council probably has the process with board members, so.
I mean. Okay, so I, I will make all these edits and give them back to you all to review. And then you're gonna put this in front of the committee.
Yeah, I'm not done yet, um, one last thing, you know, I'm not done yet, Sarah.
Oh, okay. But I, but I, but I, I just wanna make sure I'm good with this, like, everyone is.
Yes.
Some bullets.
Bullets.
Well, no, now numbers.
No, and some think she's bulleting it, some think she's numbering it.
But I think you should put numbers, because you had a good point, she actually had a good point, because if you wanna find something.
How do we refer to it, then we have to say first bullet, second bullet, and then you have to.
I just want you to do a little change.
Because this is the thing, if she, if someone wants to find something, they should have me able to look at the number, oh, okay.
It's a key. You're gonna let you give it a hard time.
Okay, I was like, okay, let me explain myself.
Since I've already put numbers, I'm really happy, so.
Now, now, since the statute um talks about Article three, um, I thought that it would have made sense to, uh, think, clarify it a bit more, you have your own.
Right, so.
Oh, general, this is general powers and duties, right?
Yes, and I thought that we should, oh, you didn't have one?
No, oh, sorry, no.
And I thought that it made sense, I don't need one, I know it at the top of my head, um, but I think that it made sense that we put some um deeper clarifying information in the bylaws. I did speak to some folks, I'm not gonna say who the folks are, um, but I do know that there, that there's just a lot of concerns that I have personally as the president. That needs to clarify um that section.
So the first paragraph is the same exact.
Correct.
So you don't wanna repeat it, right?
I uh repeat.
No, but this is his change, Article three, he wants.
Yeah, but that, but the first.
Oh, the first paragraph is already there, okay, got it, okay.
Right. So I don't know, does any committee members here have any questions about that? Board members, Night Jean, Jenny, how you feel, any thoughts, before anyone else weighs in? You good, Night Jean? Not anybody else?
Sorry. Yeah, give him a tattoo.
I think it's.
You see it, Martha, Martha, why you laughing? Any questions now?
Good luck.
This third paragraph, I.
He was waiting for you. But for me to say good luck?
I see her face, that's why.
She's waiting for you. Good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Remember, your committee, your committee governs.
I know, I know. Uh-huh.
You have a ten-member committee.
Mm-hmm.
Five people are elected, five people are appointed.
Mm-hmm.
You need six votes to pass something.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I think this is, this is where it fails.
Any questions, Dr. Dillon, I'm sorry, Knight?
I, I, there's lots of scenarios playing through my head, um.
Okay, I love scenarios.
More than questions at this point, um.
You need six votes.
Yeah.
Six votes, and it goes in, right, and it goes in?
You don't want to do six votes. No, 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 you, if if this goes in your pile, in your bylaws, this is passed.
If this is passed, if that.
It's it's only as good as six votes on your committee.
Correct.
So you can say and do whatever you want in the bylaws, and you can put this wording in, but again, right, Sarah, it takes six votes.
This, this one, I'm swisser, I think.
Yeah, I don't even.
When you say it takes six votes.
In other words. In order to pass anything as the school committee, you're gonna need to take something to a vote, and you need six votes.
Yes, oh, that's not the concern, I thought it was other concerns, right?
So, so, wait, I, I.
Does it violate charter?
I just have so many questions, but I don't know how to say them.
Are you violating your charter?
No.
Well.
Cause state law, well.
Your charter, you remember how your charter is written?
How's it written?
I, I just wonder if you're violating your charter, again.
Can you launch a specifics, though?
Not, cause like you just gave it to me, I mean, I can provide you with specifics after tonight, but.
Okay. I would say speak to Ride, that's what I'll say, speak to Ride on it.
I think there's, let me just say, can I just say one thing?
You're so blunt.
Maybe?
Maybe. Maybe.
This is a contested legal matter, I'm just gonna say that. It is, I know Ride has an opinion on it.
And by law, Ride um has the authority to, uh, what is it, interpret Title sixteen?
Totally. Right.
Correct, the commissioner has the right to the right.
But this is not something that is uncontested, and so I.
What does that mean, not uncontested?
Well, it's controversial.
Well, I'm not worried about the controversies, I'm worried about whether it's legal or is it not legal.
I know. Well, I think.
Because everything else doesn't matter.
I think that's.
Here we go with the title.
But what what pieces in there, would you say, cause I think according to state law, it says expli, explicitly, unless this, what does it say? Unless this is um delegated otherwise, the entire care, control, and management of the school system is vested with the school committee. So that means that state law trumps any charter according to that document. I should go to law school.
Okay, um. I, I think the, the last paragraph especially is, is really fuzzy with that.
I think the last paragraph conflicts with charter.
What does the last, last paragraph say?
Your last, the last.
No, you remember, you just did it.
What does the last paragraph say, though?
No merger consolidation or.
Oh, no, that, there's nothing in the charter that says the school district is to merge departments.
No, no, it doesn't say that it's to merge. There, there will.
Which piece violates the charter, I would love to have this discussed.
I told you, I need to, I can't have that discussed with you tonight, I think I need to review.
It is fuzzy.
So. So I think the ambiguity is coming from the fact that Title sixteen has scripted certain, uh. Powers for appointed school committees and certain powers for elected school committees, and they're different in a few areas. Collective bargaining, uh, approval of contracts, and independent counsel. The tricky piece is that this is hybrid, so I think.
But wait, wait a second, Sarah, though, I don't think that that is what they're saying, it's fuzzy, they're talking about the last paragraph, the last paragraph doesn't discuss the.
Well, I think, I think Sarah, yeah, I, I think.
I think she definitely, I agree with what she just told. I think she definitely, I agree with what she just told.
I think there's a lot of fuzziness.
What, what I think is this, what I'll say is, and we can move on, but I think the committee is, um, in agreement with it. No, I'm serious, I think that you guys should probably go and get some guidance from Ride and see where Ride stands on that. And then I'll be open to hearing from Ride on there, cause everything in there publicly, the commissioner has made clear is vested with the school committee, so we're just sort of reciting what.
But the law in most districts is, you're right.
But, except for Providence, which is hybrid.
All the states are elected.
But it's not fuzzy, cause the commissioner has the authority to interpret and she's made it very clear. So I think, I think, let's do this.
Above, they go back home and they read and.
Yeah, let's do that, let's go back.
They, they, they would need a process.
Yes.
Yeah, no, yes.
I just, you just need some time.
They must need to be, okay, you have to.
I noticed you gave it to us at the end of the meeting.
I did, cause I wanted, because I didn't think we would get, because I didn't.
When we're tired, this quarter we're.
I am gonna let Marianne handle this.
Oh, thank you, no, Sarah, see what she does to me.
And also, I would speak to Anthony Cottone, the chief legal counsel, speak to him, cause he has an interpretation of it.
I will. I will.
Yes, talk to, talk to Anthony, I.
I'm only reciting the law and really what.
I know.
I think this is
Yeah.
unclear.
I think it's not.
I think it's unclear for Providence, I don't think it's, you know what I'm saying, it's almost Providence.
Right.
Right, but I, but the thing, but it's, it's not unclear when the law says that the commissioner has the authority to interpret it. So anything unclear, she has the authority to interpret.
Well.
But at what point is she going?
But, but the commissioner can, can inter, but let me tell you something else, the commissioner can interpret and. I had a case, I had a case where the commissioner went one way and the Supreme Court of Rhode Island said, thank you, commissioner, we appreciate your input, and we go a different way.
But if we go there, I think that's when that takes, we're not there yet. So since we're not there yet, we go by what the commissioner interpreted, which is what's in this document. Maybe she did not, but I think what we should do is, people should have conversations with her, and Sarah, we had these conversations already. So I don't want you to make it seem as if you don't know, you know, we've had these conversations, and I also, I'm not gonna say who I went to on the record. I feel pretty comfortable with that, what I put in there, um, so I, I think that if there's any concerns, I think that it should come directly from Ride.
I'd love to know who helped you with this.
It was me, I did it, am I right or wrong?
You're correct.
But the thing is, and I'm on the record, I'm saying on the record, I'm be, yeah, I'm gonna say it on the record, I'm actually saying on the record, I'm, I, you know, I don't really care. Um, but I definitely had conversations with multiple people, you know I did, Sarah. Um, and, and Sarah was out of it, she did not get involved, that's why I had conversations with different legal counselors. People that work with the school board association and things like that, and it's been made very clear that, um, yes.
And wasn't bored, that's true.
It's been made very clear to me.
Can I just ask the hypothetical?
Alright.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is what for, I, I think the two of you are just hypothetical, regardless of what this says, right? If the school board uh, votes on anything that is in their bylaws, what does that mean in terms of operationalizing? Like, say one of these things happens differently than what's in their bylaws, do you know what I mean?
Can you be clearer, can you be more clear?
Yeah, so you have in here, for example, um, no merger shall occur, as an example. And say a merger does, but this is in the bylaws, what does that mean?
Well, we already said the bylaws don't have to be followed.
That's what I was wondering, the bylaws are, um.
Guidance.
Are like the Ten Commandments.
But I think, but one, one, one thing though.
It is, it's like, what if you violate the Ten Commandments?
But one thing, though, I think that the bylaw sets the guiding principle for the administration.
Yes.
And I think it's gonna be clear that the administration knows that there is no merging of departments.
Yes.
That's not for the school, but if the school board wants to go against the bylaws and say, okay, then it's an okay. But I think when, uh, if the superintendent thinks that it's okay, definitely under local control, and it's in the bylaws and it says that it's not, then it's not.
That's a good point. That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
That is a good point, like, if, if something were to happen.
You don't merge HR, you do not merge IT, you don't do that with.
If district did something that was contrary to the bylaws, there would be some ability for the board to have some oversight over the administration, like the district, so I can't think of an example, but if that were, but, but.
If the district had the authority to do something, I would allow it, I think.
Is that, exactly.
But let me, alright, so this is a very big district, it's not a little, little Compton or a Foster or something where
Or else.
the town and the district were gonna merge finance, or the town and the district were gonna merge IT. What concerns you that could be merged?
I'll show you.
Oh, in here in Providence, you know, I mean, it's, you're big.
Yeah, I think, um, it, it's a broader conversation, uh, and things that has taken place.
Alright, so it's not for tonight.
And it's not on, this isn't just me, this is the, this is the majority of the committee, um, just to put that out there. Um, sorry, but, you know, um, I will say that that is something, there's some things, uh, why we chose that.
Alright, so I'm, I'm, I'm in, I'm in.
And also, the thing is, if you look at it nationally, nationally, departments and stuff is not merged. In Providence, for some apparent reason, there's this sort of thing that other people run the school district, but state law does not grant that to them, so I think that there needs to be something specified to sort of clarify what the role is of the school board, which is to be the sole governing authority for the school district. So I think that that's the reason why that language needs to be in there, because too many people think that it's different than the school board governing. So I wanna make a recommendation to move that forward to the school committee, do my, uh, colleagues feel comfortable putting that language in?
Now?
Yes, okay.
Do you want this language now and?
Hmm.
And.
For discussion.
For discussion, you gotta integrate it into the draft.
Yes.
And have a full board opinion?
Yeah, discussion on it, yeah.
If it, the full board's gonna come in to discuss, yes.
Alright.
I will do it.
Yep, add that in and we'll have a discussion. If you guys have anything legally, I would love to hear it, cause I don't want Sarah to get into like a conflict of interest.
I'm, I'm, I'm not opining on this, this is, this, I've already made it clear to Tyrell, I think it's contested and I'm standing down.
Okay? I, I disagree, I think that it's something that is specified in state law. I think the law makes it very clear that Ride has the authority to interpret Title Sixteen or any.
I don't disagree with that.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
I don't disagree with that at all.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, since they agree with it, we can't say that it's, you know, anything else but that.
But we don't have a written opinion.
We don't.
From the commissioner.
But we, I, I actually got a verbal written agreement, verbally.
So that means nothing.
I know it don't.
Means nothing.
But I think until it's sort of contested, I think that it, it makes a lot of sense, but.
But any discussion at your next one.
Absolutely, but I think, but I think the main thing is gonna be legally.
Yes.
I think legally, if there's no question legally or concern legally, I think that that is, um.
Are you gonna talk about this on October twenty-second?
Yes, ma'am, we're discussing everything in the bylaws. Sarah, don't do, alright, let's close the meeting, I'll just, I'll speak to, I'll speak to you after, Sarah.
No, I, I.
Um, a motion to adjourn this meeting, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion's been made by Chairman, was that a second, second's been made by Jenny, all in favor, say aye.
Second. Aye.
Motion is passed, can we please shut the, uh, computer off? Oh, yes, you can.
So I will integrate all, all these changes and you need it quick.
I have to stay here forever.
Yes, ma'am.
Very quick. I know, but you need it, don't you, don't you submit this to the board by like Friday?
Uh, Monday.
Monday, so I can, I will, a little tiny bit of time to make all these adjustments, I mean, it won't take me long, but we wanna see it, right?
Yes. Yes.
Obviously.
Yes. You guys can leave.
I just wanna ask you a question.